Good afternoon, everybody. And welcome back to the Baltimore City Council. We are reconvening the budget hearings on Council Bill 160663. My name is Jim Kraft. I am the Vice Chairman of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. I represent the first council district. To my immediate left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
And to her left is Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District.
Thank you, sir.
To my immediate right is Ms. Marguerite Murray. Staff to the committee. Back behind her is Mr. Paul Plymouth from the President's Office. And we're joined also by Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor of the City of Baltimore, Stephanie Rawlings Blake, and by Mr. Larry Green, the Director of Council Services. Our person from budget today is Mr. Bob Seneme. Thank you. All right. We are calling for our hearing presently, the municipal and zoning appeals. So who's doing the show? David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Tanner. It's all yours. Good afternoon.
The budget for the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals is primarily personnel costs and salaries. The only other expenditure we have, other than normal office supplies, is the contract we have for the recording of the hearings through a vendor, Free State, who also does the liquor board. So it's fairly straightforward. We do not have, on staff, an operations officer or procurement officer, so we kind of have to rely on the experience of others, which we've been successful in doing with help from staff from the Department of Housing. We get advice from others, like the Labor Commissioner's Office, and when needed, and that kind of thing. So we feel, because we're such a small staff, that we don't really need a full-time position for those type of jobs. I mean, we can accommodate our needs through assistance from other people. The...I'm not sure how much more to go into.
Okay. Well, let me ask you. It looks like your budget's pretty stable. I mean, same number of positions, you're getting about $20,000 more than you did last year, and that would maintain the current level of service, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate there being a significant change in your needs when Transform is implemented?
No, I don't. But that doesn't mean we need to be prepared to make changes if necessary. I do expect an increase in the number of appeals through Transform, possibly. It's hard to say at this point. We'll have to make adjustments as we go on. I do want to stay on top of the information that we provide online, how we do the mapping, the zoning mapping, because we're going to have a whole new map. And Transform, at my request, has put that burden on the zoning board to make sure that the map is kept accurate and up-to-date. Currently, that's part of the responsibility of the zoning administrators' office. But I just, I guess I wanted to take that role on because of the seriousness of having the map accurate, or else the whole thing can fall apart. So we've been working with Mayor's Office of Information through their GIS people to make sure that we have a process for keeping the map up-to-date as changes come through. I hope to be able to do that with current staff, but again, it's going to be a learning curve as we move forward. We'll have a period of adjustment that future budgets may have to deal with any changes. But as of right now, I don't think we'll anticipate any changes, and I believe we'll be able to manage with the current staff.
The, sticking with Transform for a minute, assuming we're going to pass this at some point this fall, and it'll go into effect at some time in late spring or early summer of next year.
Yes, sir.
Is there a plan for training the board and staff on Transform so that they understand what the new law is?
We don't have a formal plan in place. The board members will receive, just like they do now, a prepared data report for each appeal that comes in front of them, that cites the issues that they're dealing with and what their authority is. And we'll have input from the Department of Planning. We're going to need to rely upon them for expertise with the new code. And they have a representative at all of our hearings to testify and provide support on the specific issues in the code. We're going to need to work with the zoning administrators' office, especially because the zoning administrators' role greatly increases under Transform. And we're going to have to develop, I think, a better process of providing the appeal record electronically, so that it's available to the public. So we are working on all those things. And hopefully, they'll coincide with Transform, so that, I mean, now is the time to do it. So we are prepared to do it. We just, it involves a lot of work, but...
We're joined by the Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Helen Holton, from the 8th District. We're also joined by Councilman Eric Costello, from the 11th District.
Thank you.
So let me just stay with that one more minute. David, with the...so the board, I know they depend on the, on planning staff, and they depend on you. And as you say, you know, these roles are going to change significantly under Transform. I mean, not just the zoning administrator, even the board is going to have...
Yes.
...changing talent. Do you think that it would be beneficial to have a training plan, whether it be through the Planning Department, or Planning Department in conjunction with the Law Department, or something like that, to take the members of the board and really give them a, you know, a thorough work session on the new zoning code? Because, as you say, you know, you brief them, you prepare the issues for them, but many of those people, they've been working with the code for many years, and even when you brief them with a particular issue, they're viewing the issue, but they're thinking about how the, what the code says. And in many cases, that's not what the code is going to say anymore. So...
I do think that's a good, I believe that would be beneficial, in addition to the fact that we're probably going to have a whole new board when the next administration comes in. The current board terms are all about to expire at the end of this administration. So there'll be some overlay in time before the new administration is able to pick a new board. But I think it's crucial that there's a training process in place. I'm not sure I'm capable of doing that by myself with just our small staff, so we would need to work with Law Department, Planning, and all the agencies that have an interest in the land use process to do that.
Bob, this is, and there are a couple of agencies like this in this situation, where they are going to need this training on the new code. And I didn't see anything in the Planning Department's budget specifically geared at training other people, whether it would be in the BMCA, whether it would be in housing code enforcement, or whatever, or anything additional in the Law Department's budget, even though they haven't come before us. And looking at their budget, that, because there are going to be additional demands on their time, I would believe, Ms. Rulie, in helping to do all this also, that's not in their budget right now. So I would ask if you could, you know, work with the Planning Department and work out, maybe with Planning and Law Department, some sort of training program?
And the cost.
You know, and what the cost would be. You know, we'd be doing it in-house, but how that would be allocable, you know, across agencies, or whether it would just be absorbed in the Planning Department budget as part of the cost of Transform? I mean, that would be my recommendation, that it would be all within Transform, because Transform doesn't work if everybody doesn't know how to do it. But, you know, sometime in probably, you know, second quarter of '17, or third quarter of '17, there's going to need to be a concentrated training session for these folks in order to get ready, you know, for doing this. So can you help us out with that? Okay. Go ahead.
We can look at that, and once we figure out what the cost is, we can figure out whether it can be absorbed, if it's small enough, or if we have to find funding for it.
Can you report that back to the committee?
Sure, sure, we'll do.
Okay.
It's also crucial that the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator in his office is included in that, because they're the first person that will have to implement it. And I've talked with Planning, and we'd like to come up with some test-case scenarios that are not real, but just to be able to give them some test-case applications to work their way through a process. I don't think it's going to be a tremendous expense to do that. It's just a matter of making sure everybody's on the same page and following the process as we go forward.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Tanner?
No, I...
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes. I'd just like to say, I think that's a very good idea about putting some training together. And I would just want to make sure the city council's also represented as part of that training, because everybody comes at it from a different point of view. And if people are going to learn the code in an oral kind of sessions, there's a lot that, between the lines about what things mean, or why things are. And so, for example, like, I'm not sure we all agree on the council, in the committee, that it's okay to not have one parking space per apartment unit. But that's kind of how this code comes out. And that's what, what's in that code is in the code. The other philosophy prevailed, which is, whatever you think, you need. Well, that's okay, but it's just how you say that. Like, you don't want it said the way I just said it. Do you understand what I'm saying? So if we were represented, as well as Planning and Law, and of course, zoning, that would be better.
I'm sure there'll be other things besides just parking that will have that kind of review. And I think the council will be prepared to make amendments to the new code as they come forward, and we learn...
Right now. I've got a list. Soon as it's, soon as it's on the streets, I'm amending.
There'll be things that we discover need to be changed, you know? And that'll be part of the curve at the beginning of implementing it.
Also, if I may say so, and this is kind of an in-house thing, we need to brief ourselves.
Well, that's something we need to do as we move forward on Transform, but I was just concerned about that.
No, no, no. I mean, the next term. I know you're going to be on the bench.
I'm going to be on the bench at the beach. All right. Anybody else? Mr. Tanner, thank you. Thank you, folks. We appreciate you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right.
We will now hear from Baltimore City Comptroller.
Huh?
Stupid. Stupid, stupid.
You do things like that, voices?
Oh, you gotta hit Justin.
Billy? Oh, God! Will he, would he do me for me?
Yes, he will.
When we get a break, maybe.
What do you point at? Which one is it?
Comptroller.
Oh, yeah. Call, okay.
Go back.
The BMCA, that was sent by two.
He can't do any...
There you go. Okay. Okay.
I know, I know. I know, I know. Right. Well, this is good to know.
Good afternoon, Madam Comptroller. How are you? I know, you know, I got to look at the clock, because, of course, the time's going by way too fast.
I know.
Welcome. And if you would begin by introducing the staff you brought with you. And we put Comptroller and Real Estate together, recognizing they're all in the same office, so introduce all your staff.
Right. Right. What I'll do is introduce my staff. The deputy's going to give an overview of all the agencies in the Comptroller's office, and then Real Estate will do their presentation separately.
Wonderful.
So the Deputy Comptroller is Harriet Taylor. We have the City Auditor, Bob McCarty. We have the Director of Communications Department, Simon Etta. And we also have with us Walter Horton, who is the Director of the Real Estate Department. And so with that, my deputy is going to give a presentation, an overview of the Comptroller's office, and the agency heads will do something briefly also.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity. As you see, this is for the...
Harriet, speak a little closer into the mic.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Forgive me. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. As Madam Comptroller said, I'll give a brief overview. The Office of the Comptroller is headed by the Comptroller, who is a citywide elected official with duties that are prescribed by charter. The city charter states that the Comptroller will provide general supervision of the Department of Audits, proper management and operation of the Department of Real Estate. The Department of Communications Services is also under the direction of the Comptroller. Other duties of the elected office of Comptroller include serving as Secretary to the Board of Estimates and membership on various boards. The mission of the Office of the Comptroller is to execute the functions mandated by the city charter, ensure accountability within government, and assure cost-effective, efficient, and fiscally sound government operations and services. Also, she supports city agencies and the Board of Estimates in the preparation of board materials and maintenance of board records of the board. The Comptroller accomplishes her mission through various activities. Audits are performed by the Department of Audits, which is an independent department. There's an arm's length review of real estate transactions proposed to the city. Also, there are reviews of financial transactions of the city. The sale, purchase, or rental of properties are done at a fair market value, and that's what the Department of Real Estate looks at very carefully. In addition, there are preparations of property appraisals. Agencies are consulted with by the Department of Communications Services for their telecommunications needs that are consistent with technological changes. Also, that department also procures telecommunications equipment and services. The Office of the Comptroller also is responsible for citywide mail processing. And in that capacity, there's the pickup and drop-off of mail interdepartmental, as well as United States Postal Mail, and some special mailing services. The Comptroller takes very seriously the due diligence review of Board of Estimates items and the preparation of the board agenda and minutes, because those are vital records for the public, as well as for city agencies. Also, as part of the Comptroller's duties and missions in fulfilling it, is to assure that there is adequate public access to public documents that are maintained by the Board of Estimates. The requests of the Comptroller for fiscal year '17 for her agencies was as follows. The Comptroller requested, under Executive Direction Control, which is the administrative office, $1,323,714. The Board of Estimates recommendation was $1,320,137. For the Department of Audits, the Comptroller requested $5,045,728. The amount that was adopted by the board was $4,265,129. And for the Department of Real Estate, the amount was $1,077,389 that was requested. The Board of Estimates adopted budget was $1,073,980. As you can see from this slide, that the request of the Comptroller was not fully funded in the board's recommendation, and that was for the general fund. For the Internal Service Fund, which is the Department of Communications Services for fiscal year '17, the request of the agency, which was $9,371,000 for the telephone exchange, was adopted in the board's recommendation, as well as for the Municipal Post Office, $742,338 was requested, and that amount was adopted by the board. For the staffing of the Office of the Comptroller, in the executive office, this is where a lot of the thinking goes into place as to what the mission is, what actions will be taken by the various departments, it's staffed by the Comptroller. The Comptroller's executive staff of three persons, and the Board of Estimates administrative staff of eight persons. The Department of Real Estate has 11 positions. The Department of Audits has 44. The Department of Communications Services has a total of 34 positions between the Municipal Telephone Exchange and the Municipal Post Office. The total staffing for the Comptroller is 101 persons. The next area is the Department of Audits, and that is an independent audit function. And I'm going to ask Mr. Robert McCarty if he would come up and speak to what the Department of Audits does.
See how to work this thing first. Just write this?
To the right.
To the right? Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Again, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the charter, the mandated services of Audits is as follows: financial transactions of municipal agencies, the annual audit of all accounts, revenues, receipts of the city, the CAFR, expenditures of city funds, and the audit of requested by the Comptroller and/or the Board of Estimates. To comply with the city charter, the department performs the following types of audits: financial audits, which examine various aspects of the entity's finances and operations, such as determining whether financial information is presented in accordance with established criteria, or the program has adhered to specific financial compliance requirements; internal control reviews, which determine whether various controls over financial operations and/or safeguarding assets are suitably designed and implemented to achieve their objectives; internal control reviews are conducted as part of an audit of an agency's financial statements; more in-depth reviews are conducted at various levels within agencies and programs. Performance audit, audits, excuse me. A performance audit is an independent examination for the purpose of reporting on the extent to which an agency or program is faithfully, efficiently, and effectively carrying out its responsibilities. Performing auditing, performance auditing provides the Board of Estimates and city management with independent analysis, evaluation, and recommendations regarding the performance of city departments and programs. We are currently auditing agency performance audits as required under the charter mandated quadrennial audits. Fraud related reviews. A department maintains a division that is responsible for identifying potential fraud indicators and conducting research in the areas of concern. The department receives and investigates complaints alleging abuses of city resources. And as you probably know, the audit department has a hotline, 410-396-3589. Quadrennial audits. When we are selected to do quadrennial audits, we believe we offer significant cost savings to the city as opposed to outsourcing those audits. The Department of Audits should be fully funded to perform the quadrennial audit functions instead of outsourcing this function. The Department of Audits charges fees for its performance of quadrennial audits when they are selected by the agencies. However, the funds are not credited to the Department of Audits as revenue, so that it can be used to enhance its services. In contrast, private CPA firms, which the Department of Audits must compete against, receive their fees and keep their fees from the city. We believe the city should fully fund the Department of Audits to perform all audit requirements of the city, including the quadrennial audits. Fully funding the Department of Audits will make the practice of the city, the Department of Finance, keeping the audit fees earned by the Department of Audits more reasonable and prudent. It is positioned the Comptroller and of the Department of Audits that the city's resources will be better utilized by increasing the budget for the audit positions rather than outsourcing the agency audits to outside CPA firms. Outsourcing is more expensive and does not produce any better results. For example, so far... For example, so far, the quadrennial audits performed have cost the city one point three The department has requested six hundred fifty, fifteen thousand and fifty-three dollars of fiscal year seventeen to perform the quadrennial audits of all the principal agencies. For fiscal year seventeen, the Office of the Comptroller requested that the budget for the Department of Audits be increased by eight hundred ninety thousand and fifty-three dollars. That total will fund three positions that have been salary saved for several years, which is one auditor three and two auditor two positions for a cost of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Additionally, it was requested to have five new positions: one supervisor, two auditor twos, I'm sorry, two auditor threes and two auditor two positions. And that was a cost of six hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. With that extra staff, we would need to increase our training budget by six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for our mandatory training for government auditors. Each year, we have audit savings. For fiscal year seventeen, we're projecting our audit savings to be around a million dollars. This is through our financial and performance audits, our pre-audit division, which reviews all the work of the Board of Estimates, and our fraud hotlines. Additionally, a single audit would have some, usually have some audit savings also. Okay, sorry. There it goes. Our current staffing: myself, city auditor, deputy city auditor, we have seven supervisors, eleven, I'm sorry, fourteen auditor threes, seventeen auditor twos. And the auditor twos encompass their trainees and their ones too as a professional progression step. We have an analyst programmer, a network engineer, an office support specialist three, and a secretary three, for a total of forty-four positions. Our objective is to provide the most timely and comprehensive scope of audit coverage of the city by deploying audit resources in an effective and efficient manner to both mandatory and all other audits and responsibilities. For the last five years, because of the budget shortfalls, the only recourse that the department has had to meet the budget shortfalls was to have salary save positions, salary save three, salary save positions. These positions would enable the Department of Audits to perform additional agency audits.
I'm going to ask Mr. Simon Etta, the Director of Communications Services, to come forward and give a presentation. Mr. Horton has an assigned time, so.
Thank you.
This button to the right if you wish. Communications Services.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. The Department of Communications Services is comprised of two divisions. The Department of Communications Services is comprised of two divisions: the Municipal Telephone Exchange and the Municipal Post Office. The Municipal Telephone Exchange provides communication services and equipment to city agencies. In FY seventeen, the Municipal Telephone Exchange will implement VoIP over Internet Protocol, otherwise known as VoIP over IP. VoIP will replace the city's age Verizon-centric technology with a city-owned system as opposed to a system owned and serviced by a telephone carrier. Over a ten-year life circle cost, VoIP is projected to save the city approximately twenty-five million dollars as in comparison to the current cost of Verizon-centric services, which are very limited. As a city-owned asset, VoIP enhances flexibility, functionality, and ease of use for city agencies by providing the following benefits: more expeditions, moves, and changes of telephone service. Today, some of our services take approximately two weeks through Verizon, with VoIP, it will probably take us a couple of hours. There will be no reliance on telephone carriers for basic services. VoIP will also offer us a reduction on long-distance charges due to some of the new technologies we'll be employing. Integration with the city's existing local wide area and fiber networks. Greater control for the city over its mission-critical voice systems such as call centers. Within the city, we use a call center quite a lot, and some of the systems have been very old and costly. VoIP will also introduce advanced features which are highly needed in the city, such as caller ID, message waiting indicators, and improve first responder mobility. The MTE twenty-four seven call center. The MTE city hall operators provide informational referral services twenty-four hours, seven days a week, by eleven telephone operators. They do provide information on city major events, weather, and school closing to constituents after our contact with emergency, medical, air, and ground transportation. They direct contact, they are the direct contact with the mayor's Office of Emergency Services, duty officer, on behalf of first responders, especially the fire department. The operators also process constituent requests, complaints, and customer service records for city services. For FY seventeen, our staffing level stands as follows: one director, one communications services supervisor, three communications assistants, one communications analyst, one, two communications analysts, two, one communications specialist, one communications services administrator, one communications services billing supervisor, eleven telephone operators, and we have addition a new position, for a total of twenty-three. The Municipal Post Office. The Municipal Post Office has acquired equipment for its mail processing operations to increase revenue by adding services such as insertions, insertions and notices, flyers, and messages that are included in the mail, and pre-sorting of mail to reduce the cost of postage. Saving the city on mailing costs will require that the majority of city mailing is pre-sorted and mailed by the MPO as opposed to multiple small department mailing services and outsourcing of pre-sorting mail. The more mail pre-sorted by the MPO, the greater efficiency and cost savings for the city as a whole. The Municipal Post Office processes mail for the city agencies as follows: picks up mail, sorts, delivers, United States Postal Service mail to eighty-eight city locations, mirrors outgoing USPS mail, receives mail from order delivery services, including United Postal Service, sorts and delivers interdepartmental mail. For FY seventeen staffing, the MPO has one mailing supervisor, two office support specialists, two office support specialists, three, six drivers, and a total of eleven positions. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Before you go, I'd like to say we've been joined by Council President C. Bernard Jack Young.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President. Thank you again. I will give a brief presentation of the Office of the Comptroller, Executive Direction Control, which is Programmer Service 130. It has two activities in the Comptroller's executive office. Activity one is executive direction control, which is control over all of the various agencies within the Office of the Comptroller. Activity two is the Board of Estimates. Under executive direction control activity one, it provides administrative support to the Comptroller in performing her duties and accomplishing the mission of the office. The staff of three provide a broad range of services, which include constituent services, public relations, and guidance to agency heads. This activity with only three persons is woefully underfunded and, as a consequence, For the Board of Estimates, that's activity two. Under this activity, the Comptroller provides the administrative functions for the Board of Estimates. Meeting the commitment to effectively support the Board of Estimates and city agencies and to provide transparency and access to the board records requires the ability to timely produce the agenda and minutes and to maintain the records of the Board of Estimates. In furtherance of activity two, the Comptroller requested an additional twenty thousand dollars to assist with funding for one new position in activity two. Currently, we have a contract position that assists with assuring that the minutes are prepared timely, that they are transcribed immediately after the board meetings, and that the minutes are up and put on the city's web in a timely manner for agencies, the public, and for whoever needs information. The Board of Estimates materials are relied upon by many people. Often, our agencies need this information to help them in various matters. Particularly, the law department uses those resources to help in litigation or resolving legal issues on behalf of the city. The request for the additional twenty thousand dollars was made because the time requirements are continually increasing for the performance of the board functions. On a daily basis, people walk into the office, request information. To the extent possible, we do not require people to file a Maryland Public Information Act request unless I, as the clerk to the board, determine that there might be something sensitive that I would want the law department to review before releasing it. So that means our staff has to be available and flexible to respond to the staff. We also, through the Board of Estimates, handles the bid, the bid process. Bidders come in daily, and particularly on Wednesdays, wanting to review materials. So we have to maintain all of those records in an orderly manner to assure that there's access to the public. The Office of the Comptroller, as stated earlier on, made a certain, certain requests for its budgets, which have been unfunded in the fiscal year seventeen requests, and really impedes the ability of the office to main, to meet its charter mandate. Accordingly, we are requesting that city council would give support to the Comptroller's requests for additional funding as she continues to talk to the administration about this, this matter. For has been, as been discussed by Mr. McCarty, the city auditor, there was requests of some eight hundred thousand dollars to restore some positions that have been salary saved for years, frozen, unable to fill, which affects the ability to do audits, as well as additional funding of five positions in order to also fully fund the quadrennial audit function and have that done without having to outsource. And as Mr. McCarty has already said, just for what's been done thus far, one point three million has been billed to the city. And finally, we discussed earlier that the Comptroller did request funding to assist with that one new position to add to a contract to assure the ability to meet the Board of Estimates functions. The Department of Real Estate also, under that department's request, to hire an additional senior-level staff person to work on special assignments such as due diligence review of TIFs, pilots, and the coordination of a marketing plan to eliminate blight in the Mr. Horton will come forward and give his presentation, but generally in conclusion for the Office of the Comptroller, the Comptroller really does need adequate funding for the various departments under the office to further the mission to execute the charter-mandated functions, assure accountability, and a fiscally sound and transparent government. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Horton to please come up and give his presentation. I'm going to take yours back. You have yours separately.
I'd like to say while we're waiting is that we've been joined by Councilwoman Bill Henry from the Fourth District, as well as Andy Smolian, Deputy Mayor for Legislative Affairs.
I don't see his. You have Real Estate separately? Because that was just all of the Comptroller Executive Direction Control. I don't see it here. Okay. Okay. On second one? Okay. That part, I don't know how to work. So you'll have to help me with that.
Is that it?
Yes. Thank you so much, Sir Walter DePusso. Do you need me to clip it for you? Okay, I'll step back and try to, try and stay it with you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to present the Department of Real Estate's budget request. The mission for the Department of Real Estate is to ensure the best interests of the cities obtained on fiscally prudent real estate transactions, which includes the acquisitions of real property, sales, leases, exchange, loans, pilots, TIFs, and other dispositions of real property of the city. The Department of Real Estate achieves its mission through the following services: lease administration, negotiations of lease terms, preparation of lease arrangements, agreements. We monitor the leases for performance and for collection. Real property appraisals, we prepare appraisals for city agencies and non-city properties. We review appraisals, appraisals performed by other appraisers. On the acquisition of real, real property, we negotiate the price, terms, and conditions, along with reviewing to make certain that is, the appraisal is in compliance. Tax sale, we assign tax sale certificates. We do the disposition of city-owned properties by preparing appraisals and determining the value. We come to the council to obtain various sales ordinances for the authority to sell those properties. We prepare contract to sales that are presented and are hopefully approved by the Board of Estimates, and we also attend the settlements of those properties. We further perform due diligence review of real estate and real estate-related financial transactions submitted to the Board of Estimates. The Department of Real Estate's significant savings during fiscal sixteen, revenue savings during fiscal sixteen, and this figures through June, April the thirtieth. In leasing of city-owned properties, we have collected three million, two hundred and sixty thousand, seventy dollars in leases. We've assigned tax sale certificates in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and we've collected fees and rental income on the distributive antennas in the tune of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, for a total of four million, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Department of Real Estate FY savings for fiscal sixteen through April the 30th, we conducted 205 appraisals and appraisal reviews for savings of $60,705 for various city agencies. What this is, is agencies will have appraisal work done. We will review the appraisals for inefficiencies and corrections, and those corrections have led to those type of savings of $60,000. Department of Real Estate priorities: ensure fiscal and sound prudent use of taxpayers' dollars, hire an additional senior-level staff person to work on special assignments such as the due diligence review for TIFs, pilots, and the coordination of marketing plan to eliminate blight. Perform due diligence review of real estate and real estate-related transactions submitted to the board. Ensure that the city-owned buildings used by city agencies instead of privately-owned buildings by reviewing our inventory and obtaining costs and the sources of funds to the repaired city-owned properties. Our department staffing for FY seventeen includes one real estate officer, two appraisers, one, five real estate agent ones, two real estate agent twos, and one administrative coordinator, for a total of eleven staff. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Let me begin by saying that I hear your appeal for support in budget increases. Unfortunately, the council, the City Council, has no authority to add or reallocate monies in the mayor's budget. Our authority is limited to budget cuts by line item to reduce the property tax rate. So that is the only authority we have with the budget, given the charter to date. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, ma'am. I only have one question, and it is relatively simple. Madam Comptroller, I see that for Service 133 that we're going to be moving to voice-over IP telephone system during this fiscal year, which, of course, was much debated. But just from your standpoint, can you talk about, have someone talk about how much savings you think that's going to bring to the city? We've heard... Yes, ma'am.
We need you to go to the, talking to the microphones. And we're being recorded, so that way people will hear.
It is projected over a 10-year period that we will save 25 million. Currently, we're spending about $400,000 a month with Verizon, and the sooner that voice-over IP is implemented, we will start recognizing savings because we will be able to reduce our line count.
Thank you, ma'am. And how soon do we think we're going to be within the fiscal year?
The, it has been awarded, and we have started the implementation. The first phase is projected to be done by August, but from what I'm understanding is that there may not be sufficient service to, so there may be some delay. Is that correct? You want to speak to that specifically? Because we're doing this, it's a collaboration between the Mayor's Office of Information Technology and the Municipal Telephone Exchange. Simon, you want to?
Yeah, Councilwoman, we are working diligently on the schedule to, it's going to be a phase implementation over three years, and the first phase is projected to be implemented by August 12. We want this to move as fast as possible so the city can start saving money. But infrastructure is a problem. So like Madam Comptroller mentioned, this is a joint collaboration between our office and the IT office. Some of the equipment will be hosted in the data centers in the city, and I believe when Moit makes his presentation here, they will be requesting some funding. We, when we put this in, we were made to understand that infrastructure is ready. It appears it's not, and that might delay the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller, and your staff for everything that you guys do. I have a couple questions for Mr. McCarty on audits, or whoever would be a...
Oh, those, that might be on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, the first thing is, you guys redid your website?
Yes, the whole, the Chorwitz office.
Yeah. Looks great.
Thank you. Yeah, we just got support from Moit to do that.
Yeah, looks good. So oftentimes, I hear that the city auditor doesn't do audits. When we know that's not the case, the city auditor does do audits within the Comptroller shop. And there's a number of those that you highlighted in the briefing today. I'm just on the website right now, and I'm looking at audits completed for 2016 and 15, but I only see for 2016, one for the 911 system. I guess it's 15, it was December 30th, and the Enoch Pratt Library, which was their CAFR. And then for 15, I have one, two, three, four audits, all similar, three having to do with Enoch Pratt, and one having to do with the 911 system. Were there other audits that were completed in 15 and/or 16? And what were those?
Okay.
I mean, are we talking like five, a dozen, 20? I don't expect you to go through all of them off the top of your head, of course.
We did the Department of Finance, quadrennial financial audit. We did the first performance audit for Department of Finance, Bureau of Collections and Inspections. We did the death relief audit.
The which one?
The death relief audit, it's under the Police Department. We, for 15, we released a single audit in 15. We're behind and doing it soon for this fiscal year. CAFR is not on our website. We're trying to get a link established to the financial webs, Department of Financials, Finance's website. The CAFR was done in August of 15.
So those other audits that you mentioned that aren't listed on the website, could we get those listed on the website to help correct?
Of course.
Just to help correct that perception. In terms of staff, I think I saw in your presentation, you have 44 staff in your shop.
Yes.
Are we maximizing the amount of output that's possible in terms of audit products with that staff?
We believe, we believe so. We do other than audit products, too. We also do the work of the pre-audit division for the Board of Estimates reviews. We also do, we have a fraud, waste, and abuse section. So we do more than audits.
Okay. In terms of, Madam Chair, I have like a dozen questions, so if you want to just cut me off when you want to, and please recycle me to the end.
Will do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'll give my time to Councilman Costello, if you'll let me, because he's asking a series of questions that I'm interested in, and I was going to ask about audits.
Okay, very good. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Councilwoman. In terms of the 13 quadrennial audits, can you go through each of the ones that you're responsible for, starting with Finance, you're doing the financial, and then the three sub-performance audits?
Yes.
And then you had another agency in the first round of five?
DPW.
DPW. Okay. So for Department of Finance, the financials completed?
Financials, excuse me, yes, financials are completed. The first performance is completed.
Bureau of Revenue Collections is completed.
Completed, yes.
And then the other two performance?
Risk, the risk management one is, the exit conference is next week, so we hope to have that out in the next two weeks, three weeks.
Fantastic.
The exit conference is the final conference, where we finalize everything, given a chance to respond and everything to the findings.
Gotcha. And then what was the third performance?
Is City Buy.
Yep.
We're in the process of that right now.
We're in the process of that right now. Do you have an estimated timeframe for completion?
I didn't bring that with me, I'm sorry, but I would say definitely by the end of August, it should be done.
Okay. And, Madam Chair, if it's all right with you, if I could just go through a list of get-backs from the Comptroller's office at the end, just to make sure everyone's on the same page?
Sure I can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Henry.
Oh, I'm...
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. DPW, what's the status of the financial and performance?
We have done background information on both. We have the selected, we have selected the performance criteria, and we plan to have it all done by the end of August.
And for both sides of it?
Both sides, yes.
Excellent. And in the second round of audits, there were four agencies, if I'm not mistaken, and the city auditor had zero, no?
Second round, zero. Second, I'm sorry, second round, zero, third round, we had two.
Okay, and who do you have in the third round?
Human Resources?
Yep.
And BDC.
And for BDC, you are just doing the performance?
The performance side, because they have their own financial audits performed.
And you concurred with the position of the Department of Finance that a financial audit was not necessary considering that they have their own independent?
Yes, I reviewed the release reports myself, and they met all the criteria.
Excellent, and I think that was the right decision. And what is the timeframe for BDC's performance?
We're doing other things at the same time. We're hoping by the end of, the goal right now is the end of November to have those done.
End of November. And the HR one, status of performance?
HR, we haven't started those yet.
Okay.
But we have some items in mind, it should be done by the end of October.
So, and that's for both pieces, financial and performance?
With pieces.
Okay. And my understanding, and Department of Finance, please chime in if I'm not correct, because you're responsible for executing the charter amendment, is that the audits have to be completed by the time the new mayor is sworn in, or is it by the end of the calendar year?
I'm not sure. I can follow up, and we can confirm that for you.
I believe it's when the new mayor is sworn in, but I think it's in, communicated as December 31st.
Okay.
But it's close. Yeah, it's close.
Once she gets sworn in, everybody goes home for a couple weeks.
So I would just respectfully point out that...
That's true.
An estimated completion date for BDC performance of end November will be a week before it should be completed, so just something to keep in mind.
Yes.
So that we get all 13 agencies, both performance and financial, done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and can you please recycle me to the end?
Certainly. Councilman Henry?
Madam Chair, if the councilman has further questions along this line, I'm happy to hold mine until he's concluded.
Okay, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, ma'am. I couldn't recall if you mentioned that the city had expended 1.3 or 3.1.
1.3.
1.3, okay. And the sum of that 1.3 is made up of not only the products that you guys are engaged on, but also the audit products that are being done externally by the private firms, correct?
The 1.3 is just the private firms.
It's just the what?
The private firms.
It's just the private firms. So what is the, what is the estimated cost of the one, two audits which have been completed by the city auditor, and the one, two, three, four audits that are underway?
I have to get back to you on HR and BDC. We haven't priced that out yet because we don't know exactly which performance audits we're doing yet.
Okay, do we have a estimated cost for the financial audit for Department of Finance, as well as the performance for Bureau of Revenue Collections? And as you're looking that up, I'm assuming, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the total cost that the city has expended on this charter amendment would be the 1.3 million to date, plus whatever figures you have. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So around 116 for Finance, 116,000.
Okay, and that's for both financial and Bureau of Revenue Collections?
Yes.
All right. So that brings us up to about 1.4 million for the completed audits. Then we have a series of audits that are underway by both your shop and by the one, two, three private vendors, because the fourth vendor, Ilana, correct me if I'm mistaken, was DQ'd, right? Okay.
Yes, they withdrew, yes.
One of the private auditors was disqualified. Well, it wasn't...
Yeah, I think they withdrew on their own, but they might have been.
They removed themselves because of a conflict of interest. I don't think anyone did anything wrong.
I'd like to add there that when we charge these fees, we don't get any use of it. We charge the fees as we do with other audits, like the single audit we charge our fees for, and basically, the city, it's included, it doesn't increase our budget at all.
Okay, so essentially, the argument from...
Have credit for this, these funds, these fees.
You're using existing budgeted resources that one could assume were intended for other purposes or other audits to help the city meet the burden of the charter required audits.
Yes, and it would be advantageous to us to have that money to use for our own resources to increase staff and our resources to do more audits.
With more money, you could complete more audits. You mentioned in your briefing that there was a million dollars in estimated cost savings from your work. Over what timeframe does that cover?
That's an estimate for fiscal year 17.
Oh, for, okay.
Going forward. It's based on averages of the past years. It's, some are higher, some are lower, but it's around that range.
So it's probably too early to have six, or it is too early to have 16 actuals. Do you have 2015 actuals for cost savings as a result?
I don't have them with me, I can provide them to you.
Okay.
Yes, would you provide them to the committee?
Sure.
And can you provide documentation for how you arrived at those estimates, just so we have some assurance that those estimates are reliable? And the, the additional request for $615,000 for the city auditor, is that meant to support just the quadrennial audits piece, or is that for additional audit functionality?
That would be basically for the, mostly for the quadrennial audit piece, yes. But it's hoped we could even do more with that. There's other agencies that are not included as part of the principal agency audits that we like to do, like the Health Department and MOHS.
So the assumption, is it a safe assumption that the 615K request for fiscal year 2017 is only intended to support the work remaining on risk management, city buy?
No, sir. No, that's just going forward to continue to do this.
But it's probably safe to assume that we're not going to have any audits in the second half of fiscal year 17, or the first half of calendar year 17, which are the same thing, right? Because there'd be a...
Well, these current audits want to go through 13. And it was chosen this year to do all four years at once. We could do biannual, make them more useful.
But for the, for the, the quadrennial requirement is that each of the 13 agencies undergo two audits during each four-year term.
Yes.
All of those will be completed theoretically by December of 2016. So what I'm saying is, it's not as if we are going to start auditing again immediately for the second four-year round of quadrennial audits.
We would prefer to do it, start immediately. Right now, the four-year audit only goes through 2013, and it's not, it's not as useful. If we could do 14 and 15 in 17, instead of waiting four years to get to 14 and 15...
Okay. So, so for example...
We'd do it continuously, that's what the plan would be.
So for example, BDC, the timeframe that that covers is 2010 through 2013?
I'm sorry, BDC?
Yeah, BDC for the performance. I was trying to, I was trying to pick out an audit that had not yet started?
Yes. The way we do our performance audits, we don't go back to 2013, even though that's what the period we're doing, because so many things have changed in the past two years. We do it currently. We do the current systems that are in place. Would make sense to do an old system that's been changed. We're just doing the current systems.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let me, I just want to piggyback on what Councilman Costello was saying. So you're doing the old, the old system versus the new system. What are the cutoff dates? Is it different for certain agencies?
The first four-year quadrennial audit was done through the fiscal year that had the most recent current, the most recent CAFR completed, which was 2013. Since then, 14's been completed, and the third round, I believe, is going through 14.
Madam Chair, can I provide clarification of that answer in response to your question?
Sure.
I believe because finance is recreating the books for each of the agencies on the financial side, they're unable to do that for anything more recent than the most recent completed CAFR statement, is that correct? So as a result, if 14 is the last year that they had the CAFR completed, then they can only go 14, and then back three more years as required by the charter amendment.
Right, but if you've done the audits through 13, you're really only looking at an audit for one year, though it's considered to be a quadrennial audit. Or are you going to go back into audit work that you've already done, because the CAFR is now available?
For the first round, the 13 CAFR was completed, and it covered fiscal years 10 to 13.
Right, got it. But the CAFR for 2014 is picking up...
So for the next time, this round one will start with fiscal year 14?
11 through 14.
Right, 11 through 14. Going back to my question, so there's a bit of redundancy...
Oh, no, those years are going to be done again. The next quadrennial audit for the round one will start in 14 and go forward.
Okay, we'll start in 14 and go forward?
Yes.
And not backwards?
Yes.
So we're actually going to miss fiscal year 14?
No years will be missed. Round one, end of the 13. So the next four-year term will start, four-year period will start with the fiscal year 14.
So my question is, when will, so when is the CAFR for 2015 coming out?
We are hoping soon, end of July or August.
I know, yeah. More like December.
I hope not.
I hope not, too, but, okay, I know, it's a timing cycle that, though we're doing them, there's not, there's a function of timeliness.
And I think, I think, Madam Chair, you pointed out one of the constraints for both the Department of Finance and the Comptroller's Office, and that's one of the inherent weaknesses in how the charter amendment is worded, in that it requires that four-year period, but doesn't take into consideration structured staggering, and when the audits are completed. I don't know if you would agree with that statement?
Just the way it was set up, it was done in three tiers, so that's the way it had to be, I guess.
Well, it did have to be that way, and I think that's probably where some input could have been given before it went forward to become a part of the charter. So in essence, it's probably begging for an amendment to what is currently in the charter.
Yes, ma'am, and I do think it's important to note that it wasn't the Comptroller's Office's decision to phase them in the three groups, rather a Department of Finance's...
And at the hearings, I suggested the biannual basis, make it more relevant.
Yeah, I think biannual would make it more relevant than quadrennial, because by the time you wait for four years, you're so far behind that whatever you find is moot in terms of correction.
Yes, ma'am. And we may be, Councilman, we may even do it on an annual basis, too, if that's what's preferred, if we have adequate staffing for that.
Can you?
Well, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, I agree with the biannual. I mean, while we're having this discussion...
But it requires a charter amendment, because, or does it...
I don't believe so, it's just interpretation. It has to be do, all four years have to be done, completed during the term of the mayor.
Okay.
If it's done annually, if it's done biannually, or four years. We started so late this time, that's why only the four years was probably suggested, I'm not sure.
So what would it take, in other words, we're the legislative body, we don't have the authority to influence policy, which that clearly is an administrative issue. I think it will boil down to cost, and so maybe the Division of Audits might prepare a report for this body in terms of cost of doing biannual audits in relation to the efficacy of them being done biannually versus quadrennally.
We can do that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
No, I just want to say that I'm...
We need you speaking to the mic, we're recording these.
I think it makes sense to go every two years, and it would be great if we don't need a charter amendment, but if we do, couldn't we whip one up?
Well, it's clear we don't need one. The charter made the provision for the audit, so it's more of a policy issue that need not be a charter amendment, and which is why I'm asking for the report that does the analysis of cost versus efficacy of four, waiting, doing four years at a time. By the time you get it done, if there are any corrections or things to be made, our external auditors have already corrected it, which almost makes it a moot issue that we're doing them. Biannually means that we get them done in a more timely manner that can actually impact the audit of the external auditors, and help us internally to better understand what we're doing and how we can do it more efficiently.
So who has to say, "Let's do it"?
I'm asking for the report from the Division of Audits. We don't have the authority to do it, but it will certainly be shared with the Department of Finance and the incoming administration to look at process and policy in terms of how we're doing what we're doing.
Great.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McCarty, while we're on this topic, I am increasingly of the mindset, and I would love to hear your opinion and the Comptroller's opinion on this, but I oftentimes hear that the city is in this dire financial situation, and that our books are not in order. But my understanding is that the CAFR continues to come back year after year with a healthy assessment of the city's books, is that correct?
Well, we've had internal control findings over the years, and this past year, in 14, it was a modified opinion for the Grants Unit.
Okay.
So other than that, it has been a clean opinion.
Okay.
A clean opinion? An unqualified opinion?
This year, there was a modification of the opinion on the Grants...
Federal grants?
Federal, state, other grants.
On federal, state, and other grants, not passing muster, to have an unqualified report.
So oftentimes, when the general public thinks of audits, they think of a finding would be the person who's sleeping in their city vehicle when they're supposed to be working. They don't really think about it in terms of financial audits or performance audits. And I'm wondering if the charter amendment itself doesn't make sense, because we've created a scenario in which the Department of Finance needs to go back and recreate the books for each of those 13 individual agencies, well, 12 in this case, because BDC is not in play anymore. But does it, in your opinion, does it, are there more cost savings to be realized by focusing on the performance audits, instead of focusing on both performance and individual agency financial audits?
In my opinion, the performance would be more what I think the original interpretation was for. The financial is already being done as part of the CAFR, it's just not broken down by the department.
Because I think most of my colleagues would agree that, I'll give you a great example, McKeldin Plaza is, probably six different agencies have authority over McKeldin Plaza, from DPW to Wreckin' Parks, to DOT, and on down the line. But I don't, I don't know that the general public really cares which agency that piece of land is considered an asset of, and on which set of books. They just care that the fountain is running and the grass is getting mowed, and that really gets to the, to the performance piece of it, as opposed to how we're doing the accounting. And I'm not suggesting we shouldn't be doing the accounting, but those types of things are assumed to be covered in the CAFR.
Yes, the financial, the financial parks are included.
Councilwoman Clark?
If I can comment on that, I was around when all this discussion was going on, much as I've never done an audit, or been audited, I don't think, at least not to my knowledge. And we did have concerns, grave concerns about, for example, the Department of Recreation and Parks. Where's Waldo? Like, where did the money go? And I'm not casting aspersions, this was the discussion, it focused on that, because the whole charter amendment began in the council, with Councilman Stokes concerned about getting an accounting from Wreckin' Parks, and when he could not, and learned that it hadn't been audited, you know. So that's the financial part of what happened here. But I think that it makes a lot of sense to say that, is the water running at McKeldin? Is it operational? Is it being cleaned? Is it being preserved? If that's the performance side of an audit, that's what, yeah, most people care about. Is the snow being shoveled? Is the, is the, you know, the, are the rats being eradicated, et cetera? It's like CityStat. Performance audit is kind of like CityStat in a vertical fashion. So, from my perspective, so, I think the fact that there's a consolidated financial report every year is good, but that it does, it sort of begs the question on individual agencies that are at of concern. So I just like to, I like the idea of doing it every two years, and maybe prioritizing performance, and hoping for the best of, you know, try to, at least in the four years, get the financials in order, so we do know where the money's going, because really, that in an agency, because I think that is important. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question for Mr. Horton about the policy of trying to keep city agencies and city-owned buildings where possible. I'm not sure that I know which downtown buildings are actually owned by the city, as opposed to which ones we're just renting space in for some of our agencies. Is this building right here, Catticorner, that MECU used to be in, is that city-owned?
That's city-owned. Several years ago, the Department of Real Estate, in cooperation with Finance, purchased that building.
Is there still vacant space in it?
The first floor, which is the main lobby space, is primarily empty right now.
But that's it?
Yeah.
So, and the building that Human Resources is in, we don't own that?
201 East Baltimore Street is privately owned right now. We're working and trying to get that agency into 7 East Redwood Street. MECU is moving out, and we're trying to coordinate that arrangement.
So we own 7 East Redwood?
Yes.
Where is MECU going?
MECU is going to a privately owned building.
I was supposed to say, want to come back here to...
No.
No, that's a pity.
They're going to a privately owned building.
Okay, alright.
You have to walk a little further, probably.
Yeah, are they going, are they going even further away than 7 East Redwood?
They're going in the building right there at Baltimore and Gilford?
Baltimore and Gilford.
Baltimore and what?
Baltimore, right at, Baltimore Light.
Baltimore and Light?
St. Paul. It's right across from, it's right across from the Apple Tree. Yeah. Alba Payne Building, Lake Mason was another one.
Oh, that's South Street.
South Street.
Baltimore and South.
South.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Very good. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. McCarty, would it make sense, if we, if there were some type of compromise, as opposed to no financial audits whatsoever for the single agencies, versus full GAGAS-compliant financial audits for the agencies? But the financial audits for each of the 13 are GAGAS-compliant, right? Would there be something in between that would kind of satisfy the original intent that Councilman Stokes had?
Could you ask me a question again? Something in between a full-blown audit and, and what?
No, so before, we didn't have financial audits for these 13 agencies. Now we have GAGAS-compliant financial audits for these 13 agencies.
Yes.
Is there some type of review in between that could be completed, which could meet the intent of Councilman Stokes' original charter amendment, so that resources could be freed to more focus on the performance side?
I believe it was pretty specific in the charter, what it was supposed to be a...
Oh, I'm speaking theoretically.
Theoretically?
Yes, I apologize, I should have provided that caveat.
I, top of my head, I would say, no. It's, it has to meet the auditing standards. We could, I could think about it, but I don't think so.
Okay. And the last question I had was related...
Yeah, she mentioned agreed-upon procedures audit, but that's not subject to the auditing standards.
And the last question I had was, you mentioned the recommendation follow-up that occurs, I think it was in your briefing a few slides back?
Yes.
Once the audits are completed, that the cost savings aren't realized until, you know, recommendations are implemented. Can you talk a little bit about the work that the city auditor does with respect to recommendation follow-up? For example, if an audit is completed on June 2 of '16, how long before you'll go back to the agency to check in to make sure that they've implemented recommendations?
For the, I'm sorry, better right there, sorry. For the more routine findings, we would just follow up on the next audit round. For those that are of more material nature, usually the Board of Estimates tells us, recommends a date to bring them back, 30 days, 60 days, and then we follow up there. A recent one has come back like three or four times, it just came back this past Wednesday with a resolution.
So basically, the BOE says, "Hey, Agency X, you've delivered your audit today, it's final, we want you to come back in front of us in two months or three months." Okay, and then that, so that recommendation follow-up is done, is reported on by the agency to the BOE, is there any work being done by the city auditor to kind of verify that those things have occurred?
Oh, yes, yes. We report that back to the board also.
Okay.
When they finish their procedures to correct it, we would follow up on them and report back to, report back to the board on their, what they've done.
So would it be possible to also add to the website that recommendation follow-up, so that we could, we could put out there in the public realm and document that these agencies are making progress towards those recommendations?
Yes, we could. There's more, the more general ones, like I said, they are just part of the next year's audit, so they're already on the website, but we could do these more detailed ones, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think the folks would be interested in seeing that, you know, if an agency doesn't get a clean bill of health, especially on the performance side, that they're taking steps to address the recommendations that were made, and that the auditors following up on them seems to...
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Branch from the 13th District, and member of the committee. Oh, and this concl, oh, no, Councilman Kraft has questions.
Two very quick questions, and I'm not sure who they'll go to. One is, what is the postal rate now, in-house? It's my favorite question every year.
The postal rate, personally?
Yeah, what is the in-house postal rate?
I have to check on that for you.
Can you let us know? Can you, can you let us know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check on that for you.
Okay.
Make sure I get something more accurate.
Okay. Right. If, if I send a, if I send down a piece of postage to you, instead of it being a, if I use my own forever stamp, it's 49 cents. If I send it to you, what is it? 54, 50?
No, well, you asked about the markup.
Yeah, what's your markup?
27%. Years ago, Finance established a marker rate in order to fund the Internal Service Fund for the NPO. And that's how the services are paid for. Now, as was, and we discussed earlier about the new equipment that the, that the NPO has.
Right.
And if we're able to do pre-sorting for city agencies, all city agencies, we can reduce the cost and hopefully drive down that 27% markup. Because all we need is, is have enough funds to support the staff.
Alright, can you remember, is it 20, you say 20?
27% markup.
27% markup. So, basically, you're about 12 cents on the...
Yes.
Okay.
Now, but if it's on a, if your mail gets pre-sorted.
Right.
It's going to drop it down, but also, the goal of the NPO is to attempt to continue to reduce that amount. And if we have a large enough volume, I can't guarantee it, but the goal would be to try to minimize that down to maybe just a penny or two to make certain that there is going to be enough money to cover the costs.
Okay.
But it stems from, how much mail are you sending out? So, it's a challenge when, if certain agencies have their own mailing operations and that all combined, then the cost doesn't get shared, so it gets disproportionate for others.
Yeah, the reason I ask about it is because, you know, we do our own mailings here out of the council, and we have a limited postage budget. So, you know, out of our expense account. So, if I'm going to mail 1,000 pieces and I'm going to mail them on my postage, if I use a forever stamp and I just mail them myself, it costs me $490. If I send them downstairs, it costs me $600.
That's correct.
You know, so, I'm just trying to weigh, you know...
And, and that's been, that's been a concern of the Comptroller, that that markup is probably not the best manner. So, if we can have other services we provide that will also support the cost of the operations for, just for the staff, because there's no profit making in the NPO.
Oh, I know, I know you're not making any money off of it.
I know, I understand that, but I'm saying, but, but that, with all due respect, I was impressed, Madam Comptroller was impressed when that remark was said. It's probably something that was said probably 30-plus years ago. I think it's probably not the best method, which is why if we can change the mode of operations to be in a full, a truly full-service mailing center, then you'll be able to bring down those costs and then, in conjunction with Finance, determine what would there really be an appropriate markup for, for services. But for insurgents, if you charge the load, it drives that down. But we got to get the volume.
Okay, great. Thank you. My second question is, and this is to, Bob, when auditing, maybe I had to step out for a minute. So, you do the audits also of the federal grants?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm going to pick an agency and just use an example, and then you tell me whether you're the guys that find this or don't find it or whatever. So, the Housing Department, okay, so...
Housing, Housing, HCD or HABC?
I know HABC is separate.
Right, okay, okay. They get their own single audit, but yes.
Right, okay. So, HCD, they get a federal grant or something, okay? And then all of a sudden, you know, we read that they either didn't spend all the money or they spent the money for programs for which the money was not allocated. Right?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Who determines that? Do you determine that on the, I mean, who discovers that? Do you discover that? Did the feds discover that? Who, does somebody hand it off at the pass?
It could be a combination of, of both. I mean, they, the feds do their own monitoring also.
Okay. Well, who's monitoring it on the front end to make sure that, that it's done properly? Or, when the grant is issued, I guess that's internal to housing, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, housing, housing makes, is supposed to make sure that they administered the grant properly, right?
Yes.
Okay. And if they screw up, you're, you're supposed to find it?
Pretty much, yes. Or, or it could be a, a federal auditor also.
Okay. But if you, if you find it, then you're charging, you, do you generally have enough time to help them correct that?
We suggest corrections, yes.
So, yeah, because, you know, in some of those circumstances, we end up, we have to give money back or we have to, you know, we get in trouble.
There are times where we question cost and we don't, and it's up to the, the federal agency or the state agency to actually disallow the cost. We just question it.
Okay.
But, but the HCD example, there are, there are programmatic people in there that do go over things and make sure things are working properly. They do have internal controls there.
Okay. Alright. I'm just worried that, you know, we, these dollars are hard to come by nowadays. And when we do get them, you know, I want to make sure that we don't lose them and that they're spent in a proper way. So, not only do we not lose them, but do we not, we don't have to give them back after we've spent them somewhere and then we have to go find money to plug the hole that we've created, you know?
And, and when we do the audits, once everything's done, so it's really not much we can do once we find a question cost.
Okay.
We recommend how to fix in the future.
Okay. Alright. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, just for clarification, and I think you already answered this. For the quadrennial audits, the agencies that are doing it externally, those, those firms go to BOE and they get awarded, right? For the ones that the Comptroller is doing, it's essentially like the agency of the Comptroller is being awarded that work. Is, is the Comptroller's office getting paid to do that or no?
We are charging fees for it, yes, as the other ones are.
Right. It's, it's, it's almost like a contract. It's like a...
Yes.
And, and, but you guys are getting paid for it, right?
Yes. It's a journal entry process.
Yes, got it, got it.
However, it doesn't increase our budget.
Correct, but it's, it's revenue on top of what your budget is, right?
Yes.
So, like, if your budget is $10 for the year and you're getting paid to do the audit for a dollar, you're actually bringing in $11, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But we only get to spend 10.
Well, don't you spend the $1 on the staff that it, that, that you paid to do the audit?
Right, gotta, gotta use the mic.
Hello, I'm Gail Adams, the Deputy City Auditor. The revenue that the city or the Department of Audits bill for to the agencies is done by journal entry.
Right.
But we, the Comptroller's office has a revenue account set aside that was established by budget, but it gets rolled back into general, the general fund, not Department of Audits. General fund.
So, I'm, I'm confused.
We don't receive the, those funds at all.
So, so essentially, okay, so your, your budget for, for this year, $16.772 million, right?
For the Comptroller's office.
Right. For everything under the Comptroller's office. Okay. Would it be easier, let's just use city auditor as an example then, if that'd be easier. So, city auditor's 4.265?
Yes.
Alright, so let's call it 4.3 million.
Okay.
So, the city auditor has appropriated 4.3 million dollars to operate for the fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's say BOE awards two audits at a cost of $150,000 apiece to the city auditor. Then the city auditor will have its 4.3 million dollars appropriated to run its operations, and then it will get a journal entry transfer of $300,000 in addition to that 4.3 million. Did I get that right?
You got it right. It's, it's in addition to 4.3, but we don't, we, we don't get to use that money.
So, where does the money go?
General fund.
So, wait a minute. So, you're, you're doing, you're doing more work than you're getting paid for?
Correct. Like, like our single audit assignment is all federal funds, so we get to reimburse for, get reimbursed for all those costs, but we, it goes to general fund.
So, you're...
Your profit making, making center for the general fund?
Yes.
Mr. Senator, can you chime in here?
So, so, wait.
So, sorry. Thank you. So, there's, there's a, there's an appropriation in the budget for quadrennial audit, for quadrennial audits. It's not in the Comptroller's budget. So, there's an appropriation for either internal audits or the payments for external audits. So, we've cho, we've chosen to budget that money in one spot because the agency gets a choice of whether they use the Comptroller or whether they use an external auditor. So, we budgeted in one spot. What, what Bob is referring to is that out of that pot of money, we would compensate the Comptroller for the work they've done if they get chosen for one of those audits.
Wait, wait a minute. My understanding, my understanding from talking with Director Raymond is that the cost of the audits for each individual agency comes out of each individual agency's appropriation. Is that correct?
That's, just to correct that, there's a, there's an appropriation, a central appropriation for the cost of all the audits, and that's where that is paid for.
Where in, where in these three thick books is that located?
It's in Volume 2. So, it's, it's, it's under Miscellaneous General Expenses on page 121 in Volume 2. If you flip to page, it's like, page, page 126 in Volume 2. And you, if you go down the line called Independent Auditors, it's Activity 47. So, there's, are you?
I'm here.
Yeah, so there's, there's $1.5 million budgeted. $500,000 of that is for the city's contract with its, its auditor, which is currently KPMG. That's not quadrennial audits. So, set that aside. Then of the million dollars, we have $200,000 budgeted for the work that's going on in Finance to gather all the data for the positions. The remaining roughly $800,000 is either for an external audit, if we're paying externally, or to potentially pay internally the Comptroller for the work they do if it's above and beyond their, their base budget.
So, the...
So, and so in a year where we, we did all four outside, assuming they all cost $200,000, we would expend all $800,000 of that with an external, with an external auditor. If we were paying the Comptroller for it, we would journal the money over the Comptroller. But it is accurate for them to say they don't get to use that money to, to increase their staff currently.
So, Councilman Costello, it's a fallacy because the Department of Audits is asked to compete for these audits. And that's why we're asking to be fully funded because we receive the, we receive the award, but we don't get any additional funding. So, we would have to perform these audits with the $4.3 million that's allocated and approved. So, it kind of doesn't make sense that we get the audit, but yet we're not paid for it. And when the outside auditors get awarded, the money actually leaves the city. When the Department of Audits does it, it stays in the general fund.
So, you, okay, so, hang on one second, please. So, item number 47 is in fact three different activities.
There's, there's three pieces of that.
Pieces of that. Even if we were being generous, we would say it's at minimum two activities. If we were to combine the Department of Finance's work to dissect all the financials by agency and then...
For auditing function and then the quadrennial.
So, the first question is, item 47 is, is two different services. One service there is quadrennial audits.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, we could break it out into two activities to be more clear.
What was this line item last year?
Same exact amount.
So, when the city auditor is awarded, in the example I used, $4.3 million appropriation, and they end up getting two awards totaling $300,000, you are telling me that that $300,000 goes back into the general fund?
It's not spent.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're doing the work. They're accurate to say they're doing the work. They're absorbing the work.
But we're not being paid for it.
Yeah, we, we chose, the reason we chose to budget in a one central spot is because the agents, when, when the audits come up, we don't know if the agency's going to pick the Department of Audits or whether they're going to pick an external audit.
But, but that's the concern that I have. Because the money is being allocated, the, the Department of Audits should be fully funded. Because we're, we are receiving the award, but we're not being paid for it. We're still operating on the appropriation of the one, the 4.3.
Right.
So, if the, if the Department of Audits is awarded all of the audits, the money is saved in the, in the general fund. We get no additional funding.
Right. Let me, let me, Mr. Senator, let, let, let me ask this, let me ask it like a simple person like I am, okay? So, Comptroller Pratt and I, you know, I'm the guy with the pencil, you know, who can do some addition and some subtraction and then much more. Comptroller Pratt has all these sophisticated people over here. She bids the contract, I bid the contract, right? And she gets the contract, she gets two contracts, I get three contracts. And the agencies, these five agencies say, well, you know, we don't want to go with her. We want to go with the guy with the pencil, okay? And my bill is $1 million. So, you write me a check for $1 million, okay? Now, part one. Part two is, agencies say, well, no, we'll go with the Comptroller and we'll give her two and you'll get three. We'll write you a check for $600,000 for my three. Comptroller gets the other two, but she doesn't get $400,000. You don't send $400,000 to her budget. You keep $400,000 in the general fund because they chose to use her, right? Is that, do I have this correct?
Sort of.
Sort of? I mean, she's not getting an extra $400,000 in her budget, is she?
No, no. And the, and the reason, and, and, and just to be clear, the, the reason we, you know, they, they talked about a request that they made to add additional staffing into the budget, you know, to keep our flexibility, we don't want to necessarily add full-time, permanent staff that will be around for years if some of these agencies are going to choose external auditors versus, versus the, the Central Audit Division here. So, we've chosen not to add that money to the budget. We have the appropriation here to pay for whatever audits come up, but we don't think it's...
Why, get that part, Mr. Lee, one of those.
I was just going to mention, any money that comes in as revenue during the year doesn't automatically go to the agency that would generate that revenue. Otherwise, you know, they have to come to you for a supplemental appropriation. You know, it gets any additional revenue that an agency were to bring in that was unanticipated. And this obviously can't be anticipated in advance because you don't know which one they'll pick.
Okay, so, okay, so that takes, so we go to this for a minute. So, if, let's play this through for a second. So, you win, you win the bid, right? And you get the, the two people and they're going to pay you $400,000. And you say, those agencies picked the Comptroller and that's $400,000. So, now you have $400,000 that has to pay her. She doesn't have any, you know, she's not going to go out and hire new people because you're saying you can't go hire new people. You're not going to authorize them.
Right.
But it's going to cost her $400,000 because she's bidding against somebody else on that. So, what she then has to do is, she's got to come in and ask for a supplemental and say, I want, I want you to transfer 4311 Service 122. Now, I want you to transfer for me $400,000 out of that agency into my agency as a consequence of this being done, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, that's how, that's how she gets the money?
That's how she would get, they would get the money. But they've been able to absorb that work. You know, they've been able to absorb that work the first two years at least in their, in their existing budget.
Madam Comptroller, do you, are we on the same page here? They're telling you how you get your money.
I'm sorry, we were told, how, how, how do we get our money?
You, you, what you do is, if, if that agency says to you, we pick you, and that number is, whatever that number is, I'm using $400,000 right now. So, that agency picks you and you get the $400,000. That $400,000 is on line 47, page 126, line 47, Service 122. Okay, this is the MR, Miscellaneous General Expenses, okay? So, you need a supplemental appropriation... So, you need a supplemental appropriation of that amount of money. The money is there for you. That money is in there right now, according to Mr. Seneme. That is the money for independent auditors, okay? You can only get it through a supplemental appropriation, okay? But it's there. It's been set aside for this. So, what you need to do is, when the money's awarded, you need to put in a request for the supplemental appropriation. Supplemental appropriation comes to us and we authorize the supplemental appropriation to transfer the money over to them, correct?
That's one way to do it. The other way to do it is, if they get the award, it's a, it's a journal entry where, where they, where they charge their cost off to this line of the budget. But as, as it's played out so far, they haven't had a cost above and beyond what their budgeted amount was to do, to do the work so far.
We don't agree that you have to have these additional costs in order to charge it back. Once that journal entry is for the comptroller, it should go into the comptroller's budget. That's what happens with other journal entries. It goes to where it belongs. I think that the approach that's being used is really not an honest approach. Because if this agency has competitively bid for an award with the private sector, there's no reason that the city, in good conscience, should take the approach you're suggesting, which is because you have absorbed, no, let me finish, because you have absorbed it-
We don't know who's getting awarded the amount.
I said, once, I said, I said, once you have competitively bid it and you get the award. I'm not talking about things that haven't happened. Once the award is made and the work is performed, you do have a journal entry. But that journal entry is done, but you didn't take the funds and put in the general fund versus putting them into the Department of Audits. That's what you've said. And I'm saying that is not the appropriate process. I don't think that really what's being said here is, in fairness, completely honest as to what's being done. You're suggesting that the only way the Department of Audits should get the funds is if they have overspent your budget. You can't overspend your budget if you refuse to allocate, no, you can't overspend if you refuse to allocate the funds to add additional staff. So meanwhile, the Department of Audits is performing the work. And really, it's a disadvantage to the entire city because it means that other artists they're performing, they have to maybe not get those done as quickly as they could in order to meet the requirement of the quadrennial audit. That is not what the goal of the city should be. This is one city and the process should be assured that there are adequate funds for the Department of Audit to perform the work for which it has bid and has been awarded.
Just, can I, can I just comment real quick, real quickly?
Address the committee, don't address one another. And we're going to go to Councilman Costello and then we'll come back, okay?
Who's auditing the transfer of journal entries?
I'm sorry?
Who's auditing the transfer of journal entries?
Department of Audits.
As part, I'm sorry, as part of the CAFRA, we do review journal entries, yes.
So, are we making sure that the journal entry transfers are actually occurring and when a supplemental appropriation is needed, it's actually happening?
In every instance, you're saying?
Are, are we, are we determining whether or not journal entry transfers are actually occurring when they should be? And if they are occurring as they should be, whether or not a supplemental appropriation request is actually occurring?
Is this related back to audit fees or is this general?
No, I'm talking about why you guys aren't getting your money.
Yeah, well, we prepare the journal entry based on agreed, the, the cost of-
I think you guys should just stop bidding on the audits and let them pay somebody else to do them. I mean, if, you know, if they're not, if you're not going to get paid for them, then to hell with it, you know? But I mean, if, if you're going to bid for them, if you're going to bid on the audits like anybody else bids on the audit, then you ought to get paid for it.
Yeah, but, but we, we, we can do it more reasonably priced than, even though we're not getting paid for it, we're still cheaper than the other, the other-
Well, I think we've got an agreement here is if, if you get, if you bid for it, you're bidding on a contract just like somebody else is bidding on a contract. The contract's getting awarded, okay? So, when the contract gets awarded, the money has to be appropriated. Whether it's being appropriated by the Board of Estimates to a third-party vendor or whether it's being appropriated to them, then we need, forget about the journal entry. That way we don't have to fight everybody. We get a supplemental appropriation, just like we're going to do this coming week to move money to transportation for snow and for police for overtime. We come in and say, we're going to move money over to comptroller's office for audits.
Right, and just to, just to clarify, the reason we budget it centrally because at the, at the beginning of the year, we don't know who's going to win each engagement.
Well, we're, we're, forget about that.
So, we, we budget the one, in one spot.
We're starting, we start tomorrow. They bid on it tomorrow, this is how it happens, right? So, we don't, we can't fight battles we've lost so far. You know, we'll spend too much time on that. But at least in the future, we know what we're going to do.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
So, are you, are you suggesting that if we win the award, that we should request?
A supplemental.
A supplemental.
Right.
Deserve to get paid for it.
We do deserve to get paid for it.
Right, and, and I think you have a lot of support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Kern, do you have a question?
Um, Mr. Vice Chair, and I just want to thank the comptroller. We came in together in 95. You'll be continuing on. And Harriet, working very well with the comptroller's office. I used to go to the Board of Estimates every week for 12 years till I got pneumonia. But it was a pleasure working with you and your staff and with my friend from real estate. I don't want to leave him out. And according to audits, and I want to say, Bob, I want to thank you for all your help over the years because we did a excruciating hard audit on express scripts, as you remember. And we had to get some help from Aon, which I didn't like, but that's okay because they gave us scripts. We got back a quarter of a million dollars and they stopped, hopefully, their fraudulent accepted practices. So, none of the members at this table here were here back when we did that audit. Took you about two years. Uh, but we did get some correction there. So, audits are very difficult. I mean, I think if you do audits of the city agencies, that's one thing. But when you do something like a contract, where you got to find out what, whether you live it up to the contract. And we found out with the express scripts to your audit, Robert, that they did not meet their, what they said in the RFP, what they were going to do on the kickbacks or rebates. It was only 2% under what they said they were going to give us. But 2% on a $177 million contract could be a lot of money. So, I just want to thank you, Robert, for that, for that. It took a while. And we also found that your audit found out that that contract was signed outside the purview of the Board of Estimates, which probably why express scripts said we didn't know them. But I just want to thank you for the years of service, Madam Comptroller, as you continue on. I will not be here after December, but it's been an honor working with you and Harriet, Walter and Robert and this young man here. I really hasn't had too many chances to, to, to work with him. But Robert Horton and, Robert and Harriet and yourself, Madam Comptroller, thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes everything that we have for the comptroller and real estate. Madam Comptroller, thank you and thank all of your folks today. All right, thank you, and thank you. And we'll be, as soon as we can switch out, we'll start with Dr. Wen in the Health Department. Thank you all again, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon. Apologize for, for getting started late here. But I, I will give you comfort that you could be the Police Department and we would have started two and a half hours late and left here at 11 o'clock last night, like we did last night with the Police Department. So, my name is Jim Kraft. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Budget Appropriations Committee. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Bob Kern from the 3rd District. To his left by Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District. To my immediate left by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. On the back row, Ms. Rebecca Tab, counsel to the City Council. To her right, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District. To his right, Ms. Caracun, Legislative Director for the President of the Baltimore City Council, Bernard Jack Young, coming down the aisle. Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District. To my right, Mr. Larry Green, Director of Council Services. To his right, Councilman Warren Branch from the 13th District. Standing in the corner back there because she's been delinquent most of the day is Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor of the City of Baltimore, Stephanie Rawlings Blake. Dr. Wen, it's your show.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much, Vice Chair, Acting Chair. And thank you all to the, the members of the City Council for your support, for your incredible hard work and, and for your partnership in all efforts relating to health and well-being in our city. So, I would also like to introduce the members of my team who are here today. They are the ones who, these are not the only members of our team, but they are the, the top-level leadership of our, of our city. Health Department who work every day to improve health and well-being of our citizens. Starting with Kristina Ruskowski, our Chief of Staff. Olivia Pharoah, one of our deputies, actually, our row of deputies is here. Hyung Tan, some of you may not have met yet, just started as our Deputy Commissioner overseeing Aging and Care Services. Don O'Neil, another one of our Deputy Commissioners, who also oversees all of our Disease Control and Clinical Services work. In our first row, you have Ryan Hemminger, Chief Finance and Admin Officer. Mary Beth Haller, many of you know, is our, all of you know, is our Assistant Commissioner overseeing Environmental Health. Francine Childs is our Assistant Commissioner for School Health. I also want to introduce you to Victor, who is, just started with me as my Executive Assistant, replacing Shirley Tame, who started medical school. Margaret Schuster, who is our acting, our, our Acting Director for Chronic Disease Prevention. And then Samantha Gardner, Eloise Mayne from Aging Care Services. Stacy Teck from Maternal-Child Health. And I may or may not have forgotten other people from the Health Department, but as they come in, I will also introduce them. But I wanted to show you the face of the individuals who are working to protect the health and well-being of our citizens. So, today I'd like to tell you about the, about our overview for the priorities that we've set in the Health Department through Healthy Baltimore 2020. Through, and also demonstrate to you some of the principles and accomplishments that we have as it leads into our funding priorities for funding for FY17. And of course, take any questions that you may have. Now, I'm very proud, very honored to be serving in the Health Department, which many of you know is the oldest and continuously operating health department in the country that was founded in 1793. And we also have a very long history of innovation, doing things that other jurisdictions can't, haven't even done after many years. For example, needle exchange. That needle exchange, we were one of the first jurisdictions in the country to start it over 20 years ago. And Congress just lifted their ban for needle exchange nationally. But we're proud to always be an innovator, to be on the cutting edge. And our needle exchange program, for example, has resulted in the percentage of individuals with HIV from IV drug use from 64% in 2000 to 8% in 2014. That is the example of public health, that we have our numbers, we have our statistics, but ultimately, it's about saving lives. And our principles are going to where people are, recognizing that we don't need people to come to our fancy building, although if you've been to our Health Department, you know it's not extremely fancy. But we believe in reaching people where they are in the communities that we serve. In protecting and serving the most vulnerable individuals, engaging in health in every issue. We see it as, not only is it an issue of education, but if our kids are not healthy, how can they pay attention in class? Or we can't just look at someone as the perpetrator of crime without also recognizing the trauma that they have gone through and recognizing the addiction, how addiction ties into all the issues in our city as well. And ensuring science and metrics along the way. So, the state of health in our city, unfortunately, is not so good. And it's important to present this because I want to show you where is our baseline that we're starting off from. Unfortunately, we do know that there is a 20-year difference in life expectancy between neighborhoods in the city. We have over 20,000 people in our city who use heroin, many more who are addicted to other substances. Our number of babies born with low birth weight still is double our national average. And every disparity that you can imagine, whether it's HIV, whether it's living in a food desert without access to healthy fruits and vegetables, African-Americans bear the brunt of our disparities. People living in poverty bear the brunt of our disparities. And so, we see from all of this that we can't just talk about healthcare. It's also about health. We may have the fanciest medical institutions that are present in our city and we do have some amazing institutions. But ultimately, it's also about protecting the health of our citizens. And that is the work that we do in the Baltimore City Health Department because we see that it's not just an issue of life and well-being, but also of social justice. So, our priorities that we have set in 2015, 2016, that go on to our budget priorities in 2017 are youth health and wellness. I know a critical issue to all of you in City Council, the health and well-being, the future of our youth has to be our number one priority. The second is addiction and mental health because it ties into everything else in our city. And then caring for the most vulnerable, whether they are vulnerable children, vulnerable individuals, vulnerable older adults and others in our city as well. So, I want to share with you some of our accomplishments in the last year because they also tie into why our budget is aligned as it is. And so, one of our signature programs that all of you have heard of and have been incredibly supportive of is Be More for Healthy Babies, which is a citywide strategy to reduce infant mortality that the Pew Trust and many national public health organizations have said is one of the crowning achievements for public health in our country. Within six years, for example, we have, this program has resulted in a 50% reduction in the number of babies who are dying in their sleep. Along with that, we've closed a disparity between African-American and white infant mortality by 40%. We've also achieved an unprecedented 36% reduction in teen birth rates. I mention all of this because our youth are our most vulnerable, but as terrible as our statistics are, in some ways, we are making strides and we have to talk about the successes that we have because these are the successes that we have to build upon. Which is why in this year, we have been expanding our Be More for Healthy Babies into a comprehensive youth health and wellness plan as well. School health, one of our, one of our key programs as well because we have thousands of our children. One-third of our kids will live below the poverty line and we have to provide for kids where they are. And so, that's why we have school health suites in all of our schools, providing nearly 300,000 visits in the last year alone. We started a new program, which again, we appreciate the support of City Council for, called Vision for Baltimore, where we are now delivering free eye exams, free eye screening, eye exams and glasses in every single one of our schools. This program, within three years, we're going to screen every child in every grade, K through 8. Because we believe that vision is a health issue, it's an education issue, but also kids may get put further behind in class and be labeled as being disruptive. And so, this is a big program that has taken us a year and a half to launch, but we're really thrilled to be able to get every child glasses who needs them. You may recall that there was a council hearing that was called by, by, by Councilman Kern about the, about the possible case of measles that occurred last year. We also in the last year convened, after that possible case, convened all of our pediatricians around the importance of immunizations. And we now have one of the highest immunizations in our public schools around the country. Um, we, I, it's a time, I think, for me to also mention that we are 80% grant-funded as an agency. We're 20% funded through the, through the city. We also are, I have an amazing staff who are very good at getting additional grants for work that we know are incredibly important to supplement our core services. And that includes a reproductive health grant that we secured as well. And also, we have pioneered legislative efforts to ban dangerous substances. Thank you to the City Council for, for allowing us to ban the dangerous substance of synthetic drugs that's been harming in particular our youth across our city. And we also have significant accomplishments for substance abuse and mental health. Again, thank you to the City Council for calling a hearing on the Mayor's Heroin Task Force. We have led the implementation of this task force recommendations, along with our partners at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. That includes a citywide overdose prevention and response plan that is one of the most aggressive in the country as recognized by our President, by, by President Obama. This President, this overdose prevention plan includes a standing order. Last year, last October, I issued a, a blanket prescription, a standing order for the antidote medication naloxone to every single one of our residents here in our city. We also then said, we must educate everyone. We believe in getting the word out, if we can all save a life, right? There are more people dying from overdose in our city than dying from homicide. This is something we can all save a life on. And so, since 2015, we have done over 11,000 naloxone trainings to teach everyone across our city on how to save a life. And Councilman Kern was very kind to be the, to be the individual demonstrating that he was dying from an overdose here in a very memorable hearing in the last, in, in the last year. We have also trained our police force and now over 20 lives have been saved just by our police alone. We've also launched a 24/7 phone line so that we can assist anyone with addiction and mental health needs. And that phone line, launched just seven months ago, now receives over 1,000 phone calls a week, illustrating, I think, the need- over 1,000 phone calls a week, illustrating, I think, the need for us to be focusing on this issue. We've also launched the Don't Die campaign, you may have seen our signs across our city for that, as well as started trauma-informed care trainings, teaching about trauma, recognizing treating the effects of trauma to over 1,200 of our frontline city workers. Now, the, we, again, are very appreciative of our, of our City Council, Council President Young, Chair Chairwoman Holton, and all of you for so many of your efforts in supporting our, caring for our most vulnerable residents. And specifically for HIV, we have secured a national grant from the CDC, $22 million worth, for treating HIV in our most vulnerable individuals, and African-American men who have sex with men, and transgendered individuals. All of you, I had the opportunity to present our citywide Zika Plan II. Now that we know that Zika is coming, yesterday, we just had the first case of a baby born in the continental U.S. with severe brain damage and microcephaly due to Zika. There are cases now all across Maryland. We're preparing for this plan. We were the first in Maryland to launch our citywide Zika preparedness plan. We will be prepared, but this illustrates the importance of why public health is so important, because it is about protecting the people who are the most vulnerable, our unborn children in some cases, against the diseases that may be impacting all of us. Along the way, we've also recognized a need for healthy foods, and so we have seven virtual supermarkets, now 10 healthy corner stores that we're launching, because we very much believe in close collaborations with our businesses, and supporting our local businesses in thriving and providing healthy foods. Senior programming, we now have a, I mentioned, our new Deputy Commissioner overseeing Aging and Care Services, who will be overseeing a new strategic plan for aging in our city. We have, we continue to deliver congregant meals for our seniors, including during the unrest, during the uprising, as you may recall, that we were the ones to figure out how it is that we would provide medications, provide dialysis, provide chemotherapy for our most vulnerable individuals who lost access to those services, provide food also, and shuttle services for our seniors. We recently piloted a program on fall prevention for older adults, recognizing that 25% of older adults will fall and break their hips, within one year, they will die. And that's why it's so important for us to focus on this, not only as health issues, but also to prevent social isolation and community integration as well. Along the community engagement lines, Safe Streets is one of the programs that we're extremely proud of. That is also an entire, or almost entirely, grant-funded program. We were able to start a new site, fifth site in Centaur Winchester this year. However, as a result of the grants ending, we're appreciative of the funding that we're, hopefully, will be able to secure through our state legislature, and one of the enhancements will also be to support Safe Streets. In 2014 alone, our Safe Streets employees mediated over 800 conflicts, and 80% of those conflicts were deemed to be, later deemed to be likely or very likely to result in gun violence. This is a matter of not only saving lives, but also of changing the community perception around violence and conflict, and it's a program that we are committed to supporting. We've also launched a number of other community engagement forums, including Baltimore in Conversation to Reduce Stigma and Shame Around Sexual Identity. Now, I frame all of this to explain to you why it is that our priorities are such, to show you that our amazing dedicated staff do a lot every day in protecting our most vulnerable. Our framework for Healthy Baltimore 2020 is also how we are aligning our FY17, our FY17 budget to these priorities. And so, to give you the high-level overview of these, our target populations, mental health and addiction, which is behavioral health, it is youth, and it is care for our most vulnerable. And our principles in doing so are being data-driven, being community-informed, focusing on where people are, and going upstream, meaning to intervene as early as possible, because we know that that early, the earliest that we intervene, the sooner we can focus on public health and prevention, the bigger difference that's going to be. And specifically, we have four buckets that we put our work in, again, recognizing that not all of these are funded by the city, and in fact, that the city, through general funds, funds about 20% of our 120 million or so work. So I'll highlight which of these are city and which ones are a combination or not of our services. Under Behavioral Health, we're launching a citywide trauma initiative. One of our federal agencies, SAMSSAM, just put out a grant for $1 million a year, over five years, that we will be applying for, for to support our citywide trauma work. Our Stabilization Center, which is the beginning of our 24/7 Behavioral Health Emergency Room, the Treatment on Demand Center, we secured $3.6 million from the state legislature, thanks to Delegate Pete Hammond, and we are working also with our local hospitals, we got another state grant to support this work, we have a small enhancement through city, through our, through our city that we're extremely grateful for, that will fund this work, and we have been meeting with our hospitals to support the operating cost for the center that will be a national model, but also one that will provide critical services for our residents. Our overdose and on-demand treatment work continues, mainly through state funding, the city also provides some funding towards this as well, recognizing, again, that this is a dire public health emergency that residents are dying from every day. In youth, and, or sorry, in violence prevention, funding for Safe Streets, I mentioned, we're also going to hospitals to look for funding for a hospital-based violence interruption. In the ER, I've treated patients who are the victims of gunshot wounds, and it's important for us to not only treat their wound, but also to address how can we prevent them from getting injured again. I mentioned our program, Vision for Baltimore. These were all private funds that were raised to support this program for getting glasses to every child. We have been able to raise those funds entirely, thanks to our partners. Chronic disease is the number 1, 2, 3 killer here in our city, high blood pressure, diabetes, obesity, and we are launching health campaigns, and also hoping to increase our work in schools to address issues like asthma, and those are some of the issues that we're focusing on, that we already focus on, but that we're continuing our focus on going into 2017 and beyond. And then our last category is our, what we say, life course and core services, which includes our programming in youth, because that is one of our top priorities, and we have an enhancement for, for this as well, a small enhancement, about 200,000, for assisting with the care coordination of our most vulnerable moms to connect them into prenatal care. Healthy seniors is a big part of it. Again, now that we have our new deputy on board, we'll be really emphasizing the strategic plan for seniors in our city. We talked about Zika, major priority, but also other emerging diseases as well. Last year, it was Ebola and measles, now it's Zika, next year, it could be something else, and we must make sure that we're prepared. And finally, state-of-the-art clinics, we're moving Eastern Health Clinic, and we want this to be a model across our city for how we can show our residents that we value them, we value wellness, and we value the health and well-being of all of our residents. So I'd like to stop there at this point, if I may, and just say, again, thank you to my team for their exceptional work every day, and thank you to the City Council for your wonderful support, for your partnership, for your collaboration. It's through your leadership that we shape these priorities, it's through your leadership and bringing issues to our attention that we know what to focus on, and it's also through your leadership that we are able to reach our residents in their time of greatest need with the services that they so critically, that they so critically need as well. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to answering your questions, Chairwoman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nguyen. We really appreciate having you on the ground in Baltimore City, helping to ensure the safety, the safe health of our city on many fronts. I'd like to say that we've been joined by Councilwoman Specter from the Fifth District. And at this point, colleagues, two questions, and to begin with, and if you have additional questions, you can recycle through. Councilman Curran, oh, Council President Young.
Good, Council President. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to go to Safe Streets and ask, why is Safe Streets in the Health Department as opposed to be, being in the mayor's office of, what do they call it, criminal, criminal justice? Because it don't seem like it's a good fit for the Health Department. So I would like to know the rationale behind that, and why is it in the Health Department?
Council President Young, thank you very much, and thank you also for your incredible leadership in our city. The reason why Safe Streets is in our Health Department is that it's based on a national model called Cure Violence that was started in Chicago, actually started by a physician and a public health leader as well. The model that is in Chicago is based on the idea that violence is a public health issue, which I see every day. I mean, I see my patients who are getting shot and stabbed, who, clearly, it's a health issue, but also, we know that violence is something that's contagious, it's spread from person to person. There is a disease model that can be applied to it with prevention, with treatment, and with epidemiology, using the same public health principles that we would use for measles. We apply that to Safe Streets. So that's the model that's been rolled out across the country, it's been, it's in the Health Department in other countries in similar ways, because it's based on this national model. And for us, the reason why we see it as being so effective is that we are able to have individuals whom talk to, so they not only talk to individuals who are in the throes of a conflict, but they also assist, for example, individuals who've been shot, individuals who've been stabbed. There are amazing stories that our Safe Streets employees will tell, of even visiting them in a hospital, or going to see them later in the community, and then being able to address violence as the root cause, not as what happens later on to patch up the wounds, but how can we address issues like housing? Several of our Safe Streets employees have gotten others into employment, have gotten them to complete their GEDs, and even attend and finish college, and so, these are the incredible stories that we have that are then mirrored by our partners across the country.
But that could not be done in the mayor's office of Criminal Justice. I just don't think that is in the right place. I think it should even, well, I had mentioned the Police Department, but one of my colleagues said, no, we shouldn't have it in the Police Department, should be in the mayor's office of Criminal Justice. I think that's a perfect fit for that, and I don't know how you feel if that was put in the mayor's office of Criminal Justice. I think that's a perfect fit, and that's where it should be. That's just my personal opinion, I can't speak for the rest of the council, and I was a little concerned with some of the things that happened with the Safe Streets in East Baltimore, and I don't want to pass that out in here, but, you know, I was very, very disturbed of what took place there, and, you know, because, you know, a technicality, those folks were allowed to keep their jobs, and I don't think that should have happened. That's just my, because it makes people not trust Safe Streets when things like that happen, and I'm one of those ones that, when that happened, it lost my, my trust, and it lost my faith.
Council President, thank you for bringing up this important issue. One of the reasons why I see this as being part of the Health Department is that everything that we do in health is about risks and benefits. If you were taking a new medication, if you were being recommended a surgery, there's always a benefit, but we also have to talk about the risks and the side effects. And Safe Streets is a program that, absolutely, there are side effects of this too, there are risks when you hire individuals who have been incarcerated, there is a risk of recidivism. We try to mitigate this by, for example, we have the Police Department, Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice as close partners in this. We also provide additional services to support our Safe Streets employees, because we know that we want to put them on the right path to reentry. And so, we know that there have been issues, not just here in Baltimore, but with every Safe Streets or Cure Violence site across the country, because that is one of the known risks of Safe Streets. But just like if somebody goes to get their appendix taken out, there is a risk of infection, but we will not say, never do appendix surgery again. And so, to that effect, we have, we have very quickly, and with direct action, addressed the issue in Safe Streets East, including with starting a Safe Streets Advisory Board that has, among other people, a co-chair, including Daniel Webster, who is a renowned expert in this. And to your point about where Safe Streets should be, I can only speak in my role as a doctor, as a scientist, I look at the models across the country, I look at the evaluations, the unbiased evaluations done by Dr. Webster and others, and the place that is recommended for this model through the public health approach is through the, is through the venue of the, of the Health Department.
And in other cities, they're, they're located inside the Health Department?
The model is, is for, is for the Health Department, always, though, in close collaboration with the rest of, with the rest of the city as well. And the reason for the, for a close collaboration is that nothing we do can be done in a silo, and for something like youth violence prevention, certainly, it cannot be done with just the mayor's office of Criminal Justice, or just the Police Department, or any other entity, always is done in collaboration. And so, here, we have a Be More for Youth blueprint that was sponsored by the National Forum and the Department of Justice in the last year, and that forum is co-chaired by, by myself and by former Mayor Kurt Schmoek. And we are bringing together a wide variety of partners, certainly from everywhere, but one of the benefits we see of having this in the Health Department is that we are able to focus not on the criminal justice aspect of this, but really focus on families, on supporting individuals, on assisting our youth, and ultimately, going way upstream and supporting our children to achieve the best outcomes possible.
Okay. All right. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Nguyen, I want to thank you for your service. You follow on a line of, I've been here for 21 years, and we've had, you are my fourth Health Commissioner, Peter Bilsen, Josh Scharfstein, Axiana, and I forget her last name.
Barbao.
Barbao. I got a first name this time, and of course, yourself, Dr. Nguyen, thank you. I've had eight Police Commissioners, but only four Health Commissioners, so that tells you, it's been a continuing of good choices we've had, and you are another good choice, and they've moved on to better things, I'm sure someday you will move on to better things, but I enjoy working with you and the successes we've had, the good outcomes, working on the Task Force, the Heroin Task Force, and others, working on food deserts, enjoyed working with Olivia Pharoah over the years, and Mary Beth Hower, over the years, since I won't be working with you guys after December, but let's get to the point. And you know where I'm going, Dr. Nguyen, I think most of the folks know you go. And Mr. Sennemy, there might be a question for you, on page 235.
You can hear the dog bark.
Service 716. You see where we got there, Robert? The Major Budget Item, the Fiscal 2017 recommends budget includes eliminating the funding for three animal enforcement officer positions that would eliminate, not reduce, eliminate lower prior responses for dead animal removal. On the top of that page here, on the service description, the service protects residents from zoonotic diseases, is that, did I pronounce that right? Dr. Nguyen, the question for you is, if dead animals stay on the street, is that a possibility that increased zoonotic diseases would happen?
Councilman Curran, thank you for that question, and the answer is yes. I mean, I have to be, I, I have to tell the truth, and I have to, I have to speak as a, as a health official.
That's good, because others have questions. So, Robert, who's going to pick up the dead animals? Now, I've already talked to the Police Department, they're not going to do it, they're, the Canine Crew to investigate animal cruelty, they're not going to do it. Who's going to pick up the dead animals? Are we just going to leave them there?
Well, I think with, you know, as we talked about in the overview hearing, the Health Department is committed to just doing the best they can to keep the service running.
Oh, wait, wait, this is your words, you made the budget book, not you, the Finance Department. Eliminate removal of dead animals, that's Finance's words. So what is your recommendation for removing the dead animals? Finance's recommendation.
It's a joint recommendation with us and Health, and again, we, we think that together we can try to figure out a way to, you know, to prioritize the high, the high-value request and do the best we can to keep the service going, but yes, there is a risk here, we acknowledge that.
I understand the best we can, I understand that, and Health Department will, but your words, Finance's word is eliminate. If you eliminate removal of dead animals, the zoonotic diseases possibly could go up, Dr. Nguyen, right? So we're no longer going to have risk prevention for protecting residents from zoonotic diseases, that's going to go out the window, Finance, so I just want to know who's going to pick up the dead animals? That's a simple question, Finance?
Anthony.
I know you're going to be working to eliminate that, but just tell me, who's going to pick up the dead animals?
If I may, you know, the framework of, of what we do, and I'm sure you see this for all the other agencies that have come, come in front of you too, it's so hard, I mean, I feel like I'm cutting, all of our choices are, are cutting something that we know is a absolutely critical service in our city. I mean, we talked about our budget landscape, I mean, you all know the budget landscape of the city extremely well, you know that we're making some extremely difficult choices, and from our standpoint, it was, what is it going to be? Are we going to stop mosquito surveillance at a time when Zika is coming? Are we going to stop providing care for our patients with HIV? Are we going to let syphilis rates go through the roof? Are we going to let more people die from overdoses when there is a medication that can save their life? I mean, these are literally life and death choices that we choose between, and we very much believe that protecting the health and well-being of our animal residents is critical in our city, and animal control fulfills that absolutely important role, because they do so much. It's not only about preventing diseases, but it's also about rescuing animals that are, that have been the victims of neglect and abuse, it's about helping animals that maybe their owners have passed away, and now we need to give them a home, and having that 24- need to give them a home. And having that 24/7 service, I mean, our animal control officers are like your EMTs, like your paramedics, who go out in the field and really have such a difficult job to do.
They face a lot of dangers out in the field, just as our Public Safety folks do. I'm just going at the Finance, they say this is going to be eliminated. So, Robert, that's your words, not mine.
I think it's just a, it's just a poor choice of words in that area. I think, again, we're just going to try to prioritize the high value ones.
I understand.
We're not suggesting, that's probably, again, not a good choice of words. Not going to leave anything out there, but again, we're just going to have to prioritize the high value requests and do the best we can with the three less.
The best we can, I understand that, but I've received over 21 years down here, at least three requests where individual has unfortunate, fortunate is to a dog, most of them, the cats, in the street, and Animal Services said, "We'll be out there," and they called me an hour later, and I was able to get them out there shortly. Nothing affects an individual. I understand family. A lot of times, these animals are part of their family, and when it's part of their family laying in the street, and we're going to eliminate disposal of that, that is wrong. I know you got a lot of, a lot of things on the plate, Dr. Nguyen. Youth prevention, seniors, you name it. The health of heroin and the Zika, yes. I'm just asking Finance, who's going to pick up the dead animals and get back to me? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark.
I, I think, I have, I have one question and one comment, it's about senior citizens, but I would like to add to what my colleague has said. There's awful lot of diseases going on, and there's a lot of problems out there. We just got to focus on the ones we can solve. We can't do everything. I think awareness is hugely important, and I think that's what the Health Department is doing. Warning, advising, that's wonderful, but doing is another thing that we are, we can't spread ourselves too thin. My colleague's talking about a service that is crucial in this city and needed, and people rely on it. It's a service. It's not a disease, it's a thing we do, they pay for, and depend on. So, I think we have to start, well, and so let me move to seniors. You know what I'm going to say. You can't, one person can't do everything, one agency can't do everything. I think you're doing an amazing job just lifting up all the things we need to do, but we cannot ourselves do them. Now, one way to proceed is the way we do with animal control. We have a very strong animal control leader, she's like self-motivated, self, she runs it. So, I'm not going to call you, the Commissioner, about a problem, I'm going to call her, and then if she needs backup, I'm going to call Mary Beth and Patricia Falls and stuff. It's a service. Senior citizens used to be a service in this city. We've got a brand-new chief of senior citizens, welcome. But it operated as a separate agency, and should again, but certainly within the Health Department, it should be, it should be supported so that a person like me knows to call the Director of Senior Services and know that that's a service and that it's going to get attention. But for that to happen, you have to have the authority of that position, and the head of senior citizens in this city used to sit on the mayor's, any mayor's cabinet, and I believe somehow got back on there again toward the end of Mr. Appel's term, but should be required by the importance of that service to be there. And my question is, is the Health Department willing to fight for that position? Because that is one of the ways that seniors out here, and we will take it seriously, that it's not just one of a thousand things out there, but it's, it's got its own identity, and it's a service. The, the comment I wanted to make was that the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education was, for as long as memory serves, a separate agency of the City of Baltimore. Its director was, was well-known almost as whoever the Police Commissioner was, and certainly better than whoever the Director of Health was, because it was a service-driven organization. So, the reason I would like to fight to get it back in that position is that it needs to be there for, I mean, we have baby boomers who are now senior citizens. We know that's a large population, and we know that what we, the services we provide, the few that we do now out there in the senior centers are, are a lot of um pa pa and trips to someplace to shop, and that's all very well and good for the older old people who are used to that. But the seniors coming in are seniors, and they need training for retirement careers, because they're not going to make enough in retirement anymore to survive. They need help retraining, getting upgraded in technical skills, connecting and networking with a whole new world of job opportunities. The, they do need recreational opportunities that are affordable for someone living in retirement. They need socialization. So, you can't put all that inside an agency, call it something, and think something's going to happen. Even with wonderful leadership and everything else, it's not. It requires another, a leader that's been chosen to rise up and be known as that, and to be able to have the cabinet position, and to be able to have the authority to make things happen in a big way for the boomers and the X-gens and millennials, when they get there, which is sooner than they probably think. And they are very demanding, I would say. So, that's my comment, and my question was, can you, will you help us get that cabinet position and keep it?
Councilwoman, if I may, first say that I'm so grateful for your leadership and advocacy on issues facing our older adults, and you said it perfectly, that just like with young adults, or children, or babies, that we can't just look at the, at one population and say, "Oh, it's just about preventing something bad from happening." The disease prevention, the treatment is absolutely important, and especially as we get older, the number of medical conditions increase, and that has to be a part of what we think about, but it's not just about prevention of disease, it's about promotion of health, promotion of well-being, reducing social isolation, providing other services, but also making sure that older adults have a critical voice, the critical voice that they really do represent in our communities. And so, I'll explain to you my rationale. Obviously, I was not here at the time that Aging and Care Commission existed, but my, and Councilwoman Clark and I talked earlier about the reasons for, what I see as the reasons for having aging and care services together with health, and for me, it comes down to the fact that we have the same mission, which is to promote health, promote well-being, promote equity, as does the care for aging, the same way that we do for youth, that we represent youth and mothers as well. For us, it's also about economies of scale. We are very good at writing grants, we are very effective at getting grants, we're 80% grant-dependent in the Health Department, as is the Aging and Care Services, that there are many different federal grants and state grants and contracts that come through, and so we're able to assist in that way. But also, we have the power of working together on shared legislative efforts that we have been working on over the last, certainly over the last year and a half since I've been here, working to make sure that the cuts that were initially put to us by the state don't happen. We have great legislators in the city, great legislators on the state, on the state level, who fight for us, and we are fully committed to ensuring that older adults, especially under the direction of Deputy Commissioner Tan, that they get the, that they get the attention and action and urgency that they, that they really deserve. Now, Deputy Commissioner Tan started just over, I think, under two months ago.
Her to do it by herself. But let me say this, getting older is not a disease. There is, it's not for the faint of heart, but it's not a disease, it is a stage of adulthood. It is a place in a life, in a lot of lives, in which people have completed their work lives and welcomed a few years, many years, of being able to choose better, but those choices have diminished as the economy has shrunk. And so, they're looking, they need help, but it's not a disease. It is looked upon as one of the last things you're politically correct enough to make fun of, but it's really not funny. It's not a disease, and it's not something to stereotype people about. It's something for us to honor and make use of a population of people who have contributed and will continue to, and should not be stuck away in a corner in hopes they don't get sick. Everybody's going to die, but they might not even be sick before they do. It's not a disease, and it is a stigma right now, because there's economic pressure to get out of the way, because there's so many people that need jobs and all that. I'm just saying, do what we used to do without the um pa pa, but with the respect that younger aging people deserve, because we're counting on them to hang on to the neighborhoods, hang on to Baltimore, and to be there for the city as we help our young people grow into their leadership roles. So, that's, I mean, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
It's important.
Councilman Costello.
You step down.
Oh, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Nguyen, and everybody from the Health Department for all of your hard work. Dr. Nguyen, I want to talk about Service 316 first, in a little different vein, and then the President. I want to hone in specifically around the million dollars that we're expecting from the state, and what the impacts of that would be if the Governor does not approve that and send that to us, and how would that not just impact Safe Streets, but all of our other violence prevention efforts in the city. And for you, Mr. Sennemy, in the event that the Governor does not fund it, are we going to see a supplemental from the administration funding this, because we know these efforts are critically important to the, to the safety of our citizens, but also for us to start to begin to look at, continue to look at violence outside of the Police Department, and look at it, as Dr. Nguyen alluded to earlier, as a health epidemic as it is, and today is National Gun Violence Day, that's why I have my orange on, but we have to stop thinking about it just as something that's going to be solved on Fayette Street. It's a health issue, and we have to do that. We have to invest more money in it. I'm encouraged by us increasing the amount of money that we are putting into this service, but it's still not enough. We have to start looking at funding families drifting training programs, because we know, the data tells us, as early as third grade, which young people are most likely to end up being a perpetrator or the victim of violence, and what would our city look like if we were investing in them and their families as a total, as a total unit from that point until their adulthood?
Yes, I can, I can just comment on the, on the funding, and I'll defer to the Commissioner on the, on the impact. So, I think Andrew explained at the, at the overview hearing that there is these funds that the Governor wants to put to the Rainy Day Fund, but the Legislature has tried to earmark them for these, these programs, one of them being a million dollars for Safe Streets. We have, we've put that money in the budget, hoping that we'll, we'll receive that. We don't know when we'll find out when that funding will be available. It's definitely higher on our priority list if it was not to get funded, so we would try to come up with some kind of solution, but I don't know what that is at this point. Commissioner can kind of talk about the impact, or what that would, what that would mean.
Sure. I had the, the opportunity over the last year to look for a lot of funding for, to sustain Safe Streets. This is a program that we very much believe in. We've seen the successes, we've seen how many of the posts have gone for a year or longer without having a fatal shooting, even while violence has risen around it. Independent evaluations have shown how effective it is in reducing both fatal and non-fatal shootings, and so it's important to us in looking at a program, as Councilman Scott is alluding to, to not just look at the cost of the program, but the value of the program. And I think there's also something to be said about the cost of doing nothing. If you do nothing, there's a cost associated with that as well. And so, we knew that our Safe Streets programs required additional funding, because they were grant-funded, and the grants are coming to an end. And for us, if such a program is so effective, if there are homicides that are being prevented through not that much money, then we do have a duty to keep that program going. So, we were able to raise some private funds to keep it going, we were able to, to even during a very tight fiscal climate, have a commitment from the, from the city for some of those funds through an enhancement, and we are very much crossing our fingers and hoping that the Governor will not veto this entire, the entire budget in this. I mean, this is, for us, this is a critical priority, and I urge for City Council and for all of our legislators to look at not only the cost of a program, but also the investment that it has in our city's future.
And Dr. Nguyen, just to follow up, so if we don't get the money, are we going to, and let's just say, in the worst-case scenario, Mr. Sennemy and Mr. Klein don't send you a supplemental, will it mean the loss of some of the program?
Yes, it will. It will result in the closure of Safe Street sites, which we can only project, because we do, we are effective in mediating violence and conflict, that it could then see a resultant spike in homicide and violent crime.
Know how many?
It would be for, in terms of number of sites.
Sites, yes, ma'am.
Million dollars, so.
Four sites immediately, I'm sorry.
Four sites immediately, and our newest site has dollars until next February.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. My second question is for my favorite service in city government, Service 717 Environmental Health. Of course, I thank the world of this service and our health inspectors and all the hard work that Mary Beth and Patricia and Jessica do. This is actually just for you, Mr. Sennemy. This, while we have, we know that we're in a tough fiscal position across the city, but we have seen in several other services, including in Finance, over the past couple of years, positions added in. This is one that we should be adding. We should simply be adding more health inspectors. We're talking about the safety and the administration, we often focus on food deserts, and inside of those food deserts, oftentimes the only places that often offer food are dirty, and these are places that we're continuously having to close down, but because we have a limited amount of health inspectors, we are not doing the work that they could be doing. They're doing great work each and every day, including a few hours ago, closing down Councilman Kern's favorite bakery on Hartford Road, but, but we could be doing more in serving and better protecting the health of our citizens. This is, this is a service that should see more people through time, because we are definitely getting our bang for our buck. The citizens are loving the open and data and transparency within this agency, within this particular service, but they also would like to see more. They want to see us inspecting more, they want to see more inspectors, so they can feel like, when they go to a place, they can go in and feel like they can eat and be safe and not worried about getting sick. So, can you talk about in the future how we can add to this service, as we've added to other services, that quite frankly, do not directly benefit the citizens on a daily basis?
Sure. So, for this year... So for this year, for Fiscal 17, you know, it's current-level service, so we are maintaining. You know, we did make a change to this service before. We had, we actually gave enhancement funding to this service to put the handheld devices in, which we're hoping that, you know, potentially not even having to add more resources, we could be more efficient and do more work. So I can't speak beyond that to, you know, eighteen and beyond. But we have, you know, invested money in this service and at least maintain the service. Understood that it's very important to you, and we'd like to be able to maintain the service going forward.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Nguyen, thank you for everything that the Health Department does. Your folks are incredibly responsive. Mary Beth, I talk more frequently than we probably both like. Andrew Nicholas in Legislative Affairs, and of course, Sean Naren, PIO shop. Really appreciate everything. I had a question about Service 721, Senior Centers. Just out of curiosity, some of our smaller senior programs, like the Allen Center in South Baltimore, which recently moved to a church in Locust Point, as well as the one that's run out of the Locust Point Recreation Center, are those funded, whatever funding they receive, are those funded through the Health Department, through this service? Or is 721 just for kind of the larger senior centers? Like, I see the list on the back, like the Waxer Center.
May I turn to Deputy Commissioner and also to Ryan Hemminger to answer that?
Hi. I can answer that briefly. We have a couple. It's a hybrid funding in terms of what we fund. We fund about six operated, city-operated senior centers through city funds in addition to state and federal funds, majority of that.
Yeah, those are the six listed. Items eleven through sixteen. Oh, is that the independent? So is what I'm talking about, the independent senior centers, under item number seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
The other eight are independent, yep.
So that's getting cut ninety-five thousand dollars this year?
I'm sorry.
Um, I'm on Service 721, Senior Centers.
I'm looking at that right now.
And I'm under expenditures by activity, line item number seventeen, Independent Senior Centers.
Yes.
We need you to come up to a microphone because this is being recorded.
That is, that is the SCAL funding that we're talking about.
Yes.
So for the independent senior centers, they only receive state funding in the form of senior center operating funds. General funds also has the same language as the line item, but that's a state fund, and that was reallocated back to the senior centers for FY16.
Okay. And so just to close the loop and confirm. Right. But that's the money that pays for things like the Allen Center and the senior program at the Locust Point Recreation Center?
And they receive federal, and they receive that state funding. Yes, correct.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I just wanted to add, through the leadership of Delicate Washington, this will be at-level funding for 2018.
And I was just gonna point out to Dr. Nguyen, this is a Coke Zero, not a Coke.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're so very welcome. Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo one something I heard both my colleagues from the Second District and the Council President was mentioning with the Safe Streets program. As a young kid at eleven years old, growing up in the inner city, I witnessed my first homicide as a young kid. And a neighbor of mine was gunned down with a sawed-off shotgun, and I was traumatized. The police officers, they dealt with the crime scene. And there was no one to deal with the traumatic experience from the people in the community that witnessed the crime. And I was just looking at the amount of funds that's spent on some of the Safe Street programs. Is there some way possible that when, I'm looking at more so like a conjunction with the Health Department and the Police Department? Because if you actually look at it, with the spike of homicides that's increasing in the city of Baltimore, I mean, if I experienced it, and I can remember this at eleven years old, then I can almost imagine how many of the young kids in the inner city still, I mean, will probably experience the same thing. And I was hoping, is there some way that the connection could be made with the two? With Safe Street not only going out, I wanted to know, first of all, was there any programs for the community to deal with situations like that? And second of all, would there be any way that Safe Streets, working along with the Police Department, can go out and they can, or someone from your office can speak to some of the people in the community dealing with some of the experiences of homicide? No one spoke with me. No one talked to me. And my nerves were shattered for months until eventually it just became common practice in the inner city to see someone shot or stabbed.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Branch. This is an area we really, we realize that we need more work in really helping to, our community members deal with trauma. Over the past year, we've been doing some trauma training thanks to support, free support from SAMSA. I'm training those in our city agencies and nonprofit organizations like Dayspring and some others to train their employees to work with young people and families in a way that doesn't re-traumatize them. But specifically to what you're speaking of, actually, our Youth Violence Prevention Office and Safe Streets Program received a grant from the Department of Justice back in the fall. We're calling it Support Our Survivors. And we're specifically developing a curriculum that will work in conjunction with our Safe Streets programs to provide trauma-informed care to people who are survivors of violence. And that meaning, you know, those around the violence that's happening. You know, we can't be everywhere in the city, and it's something we definitely need to look at citywide. Also, we do know that the Federal Department of Education is going to be coming out with a grant opportunity that they want the schools to apply for around trauma. And we stand ready to help the school system apply for that grant when it comes out because we think that that's another opportunity to provide really deep trauma-informed care for school students and other youth in the community. But we are working this grant. Right now, we're in the planning stages of it, but we received it, and we should be implementing it in the next few months. But it's called Support Our Survivors, and it's working in conjunction with our Safe Streets teams.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no other questions, we thank you for your service. Please keep up the good work as you safeguard and protect the health of Baltimore City. Thank you very much. We will next, so we will now hear from General Services. We'll take a... We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and resume with General Services at five thirty-five. Good afternoon. My name is Helen Holton from the Eighth District Chair of the Budget Appropriations Committee. We are reconvening our hearings. To my left, your right. To my left, your right is Council President C. Bernard Jack Young and Ms. Rebecca Tab, Legal Counsel for the City Council. To my right, your left is Ms. Marguerite Murray, Staff to the Committee. Councilwoman Rochelle Ricky Specter from the Fifth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Paul Plymouth from the President's Office and Mr. Larry Green, Director of Council Services. Mr. Sharkey, how are you? We would like for you to begin by introducing the staff you brought with you. Go into your presentation, and then we will follow up with questions.
Great, thank you. Again, I'm Steve Sharkey, Director of General Services. Thank you for having me. And I will quickly introduce you to my staff, who has done so much awesome work. And this is just a couple of the Upper Lover staff. I told some of them, you can come if you want, and you don't even have to come. And some of them even came just because they love the budget, I guess. They want to gloat about the award win for the thing. But this is Burke Atella. He's my CFO. Bob Gibson, Chief of Fleet. Bambi Stevens, Chief of Major Projects. Steve Strickland, Chief of Facilities Maintenance. Ryan Trout, PIO slash Legislative Officer. Chi Chi Niaga Nash, Deputy Chief of Fleet. Jackson Gilman-Forlini, Historic Properties Manager. Gary Holland, Chief of Staff. Terrence Jennings, Real Estate Agent.
Uh, who?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Real estate agent?
Yeah, come on, guys, raise your hand.
Yes, stand up, identify yourselves. We can't see you in the second row.
Raise your hands, guys. Willem El-Savier. Are you technically an architect or a design? He's an architect. Babla Alina, Process Improvement Manager. And Marwan Al-Karajat, Engineering Supervisor.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, we've been joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the Fourteenth District.
And just wanted to talk a little bit about DGS. It's exciting to be here, and I just want to briefly say that we're a very proactive and data-driven agency. I'm enthused to share, talk about how investments in DGS are gonna improve the lives of residents in Baltimore City. Although we're inward-facing, the support we provide to other agencies is very important. So, you know, we're here to get, if we don't get the fire trucks fixed, the firemen don't get there. If we don't get the trash trucks fixed, the trashmen don't get there. And if we don't get the buildings fixed, the buildings don't open. And I just want to, again, touch on my team. We've, every year, we've tried to fix as many problems as we can, and then we go back and we do it again, and we just keep trying to get slightly better each year. And the proposed budget allows us to continue towards industry best practices that, when I got to the agency, we didn't follow. But each year, we're adding a new agency best practice in terms of building maintenance or fleet maintenance. And I'm really proud that each year it grows, and we see improvement from all of that. And let me just kind of talk about a couple of the activities. The main thing that we are really working on, like I said, is these best practices that have not been practiced previously in the agency, but are, that we're moving into. So we have a special PM shop for trucks. PMs is preventative maintenances, which is more than just an oil change. It's a full checkover of trucks. Now, we've always been doing PMs, but we specifically set up a truck PM shop so that those gentlemen are very well-trained and very knowledgeable about that specific field. And it's improved the turnaround time for trucks, but it's also improved how much they know and how quick the PMs happen. So, and the quality of the PMs, where they can diagnose issues and solve them quicker. And like a stitch in time saves nine would be my analysis. We're also building up a PM shop to focus on air conditioning PMs in facilities. We're also continuing the rapid, the master lease to replace vehicles. Some highlight, about two weeks ago, you saw that the Fire Department got three big, heavy trucks that were dinosaurs replaced. And if we hadn't had the master lease program, they probably would have ended up being forty years old before they ever got replaced. And we also developed a mobile maintenance pilot for remote facilities, which, again, is in the Facilities Group to better serve the outlying locations. And I will go to Fleet Management. So, again, I love Fleet as a team, and we support city goals and city agencies. The highlights are, we moved the debt service. So I guess we're up here. The debt service into Fleet for fifteen-point-five million dollars. That fifteen-point-five million dollars was in some sort of other account. It's been moved into Fleet's accounts, so it wasn't showing on our budget before. It was showing on some sort of finance account. Now it's showing there. And that's the money that we use to purchase the master lease vehicles. So it's just in a different location now, under us. Also, again, to mention the emergence of the PM shop, which has been a big hit and really improved truck availability. And master lease replacement and PM will improve all performance measures, including availability and miles per gallon. So one side effect of us being able to replace all these vehicles is that the average miles per gallon of our trucks and vehicles was seven miles per gallon a couple of years ago. Now we're at nine miles per gallon. Now, that sounds really low, but in terms of, if you think about how many trash trucks and dump trucks and everything else, that's why our available number is low. But it is trending upwards based on newer vehicles that, you know, we don't have a nineteen-eighty-seven vehicle anymore in our fleet. Now it's newer vehicles with better emission standards. I'll jump over to the admin. Admin section. This is really just the IT, Fiscal and Strategic Management, Historic Property Preservation, Space Planning. And we reorganized our Municipal Facilities Management section under the admin. That's the people that we look to find new space for new city agencies or growing city agencies and try to consolidate space. So we've saved the city quite a bit of money by having agencies that have more people than space, so they have more space than they need and trying to get them to reduce their space and put more people into spaces. Or to get them out of private leases and into vacant city spaces. We also are focused on job-specific training. Most of our staff has taken lean, the lean government training. And also, a big highlight is that we've improved how quickly we can pay, we pay our vendors. This was a big problem, it's a difficult process. And we've just kind of come up with a new process, and it's gonna be, we were sort of the pilot or sort of the team that came up with it. And now it's gonna be transferred over. And that's specifically to on-call contractors. So I get a lot less angry calls from HVAC contractors than I used to, and I want to thank Burke for that process. Jump over to Facilities Maintenance. So Facilities Maintenance, again, is the people who come, and we fix city buildings, not recs and parks buildings and not water and wastewater facilities. But we have our own buildings downtown. Plus, anytime an agency asks for help, we're there to help them. And we also do cleaning. And we also do cleaning. We received the Best Use of Data Budget Award from the Outcome Budgeting Team. And also, so the budget increase includes some increased custodial services, especially for the downtown campus and the police districts. We're establishing a $2.1 million capital reserve. So, something about, we've increased our knowledge of these buildings, I don't know, tenfold over the last three years. And we've learned through something called the FCI Index that our buildings are in bad shape because of disinvestment over many, many years.
Say that again, would you please?
I say it every year.
Yeah, I know, but would you say it again?
Certainly, we have... Due to disinvestment over many years, our buildings are not in the best shape.
Right, we just like to then sell them off and take the money and not be property owners anymore.
But we keep making houses.
Right. Go ahead, Steve.
So, also, we have the emergence of the PM shop in facilities. Again, I want to talk about being proactive, a stitch in time saves nine. Historically, we've just been, I guess, quote-unquote firefighters. You have a problem, we go fix it, but we don't go ahead. Now, we're being more proactive about fixing major systems and buildings. So, now, we have an HVAC PM program, are going to move on to other larger pieces of equipment so that they get tuned up and checked before they become bigger problems, which will end up leaving a longer lifespan for the equipment and save money and time. And these things are all things that most facilities maintenance places, or, you know, public buildings do, that we have not been doing historically, but we're moving to do more each year. And again, we're implementing a mobile maintenance pilot, where we're going to go out to police districts and get, hopefully, more work done out there. Also, the Design and Major Projects Division does the major, larger projects. We now are having the budgets maintaining funding for a project manager and licensing for support equipment. So, we've been doing our project management by paper, which is not an appropriate or modern standard. And now, we have P6 software, so our project manager is now getting trained, and will be using modern project management software. And that's... We're really excited about that. And that's it, time for questions.
Okay, Council President.
Thank you. I always talk about the buildings, because I believe that our assets should be taken care of. And have finance put more money into your budget for the upkeep of city buildings, because I know downstairs, where the law department moved out, could be space, because we're landlocked in City Hall. We have staff on top of staff, because you know how small this building is. And downstairs need to be fixed. Can you tell me what's the plan for downstairs, if there are any plans? The lower level, where the law department moved out of.
Yeah, okay, um, let me... So, I'll stick on that part. So, we've kind of been trying to just kind of approach downstairs with a piecemeal approach. So, we go to each spot, we've done a concrete front to front the concrete of a certain part of the building. But we need to do some more concrete frontage on other parts of the buildings in the front to make sure that it's totally fixed up. We also fixed the HVAC systems completely. But there are probably about 25% of the floor is still a scent. So, we're... Every, you know, we try something new and fix it, try something new and fix it. So, we're just trying to make sure that we can get rid of all the scents there. So, it is a basement, and when the building was originally built, it was not meant for habitation. When they redid it in 1979, 1980, they put people down there. So, we're continuing to work on that. We've... The next step is to... So, in 1979, 80, like I said, they put the people down there, but we're working on it. We are going to be moving. We fixed up the conference rooms downstairs, so there are going to be conference rooms down there. Law is using some of the places for storage, but I can give you more plans on that in the next couple of weeks, because we're trying... We're not trying to use a lot of money, because we want to fix the bigger problems first, but we don't know exactly what they are. But we have worked on that extensively.
Okay, but if you don't take care of City Hall, it's telling me that you're not taking care of the other buildings that we own throughout the city of Baltimore. This is where we work, this is where citizens come, you know. So, what's going on with upstairs? And our balcony, that they said that I closed down because I didn't want students up there, when it was unsafe.
June 14th, we had to get purchasing, so it took about 12 weeks to get the chairs. So, June 14th, the chairs will be in.
Okay, all right.
Just enough for hearing.
Yeah, just enough for hearing. We were trying to add up the employees. I came up with 387, and the chair have 388. How many total employees do you all have?
In which, the agency as a whole?
In General Services, period. I have 387, because I've seen some...
388 positions, but not necessarily employees.
Well, I don't really have any complaints, other than our city buildings need to be taken care of more properly. And like I told you before, I think that we will get better bang for our buck if we bring our own folk back in to clean and be the security in our buildings. I think we will have greater control over that. I know we outsourced that, but I think bringing it in-house would be more prudent. And I just want to say one thing about Bob Gibson, who, I don't care what happens with our vehicles. I know I call him on Sunday, Sunday night sometime, and I just feel sorry for him. But this man, and it's not to downplay anybody else, but this man answers his phone 24/7. And I was having an issue, because the truck was in the shop, and I had some resolutions in there. And I was running late to go to the event, and I called him, I said, "Bob, I don't know, man, but I have a resolution, going to speak, and I need him." He told me, "Meet me there..." First of all, he asked me what time, I think it was at 1:00. He said, "Meet me there," and he got there before I could really hang up the phone. He called and said, "Hey, I'm here, where are you?" Went over and got it. So, I really appreciate that, that's going over and beyond. And I can give you more examples of the work that this man does. Councilman Branch was not here, had a little problem, and we didn't know who else to call. So, I called Bob, and Bob solved the problem. These are the things that people don't know about, that people that work for the city, they holler, lazy and shiftless, and don't, you know, do things. They don't understand or don't know the things that people do that they don't really have to do after they off from work, you know. And these are the things that we expect of our city workers to, you know, just go over and beyond. And this guy is a perfect example of going over and beyond. This dude, I don't care when I call him, about anything, I guess he's going to change his cell number going forward. But I worry him to death. So, thank you, and that's, you know, I don't have anything negative to say about your department. Everybody there is very responsive when we have problems. You know, I call you too.
I know, I pick up, or I might call you back five minutes later if the baby's in the tub.
I call you too, and I email and text you too. So, it goes for you too, you know. But I just wanted to highlight him, because I just worry the hell out of this man, you know. And I would like to see finance have all of our cars that are leased come through General Services. I know it's a lot of work you're rubbing your... You wiping your head?
No, I'm okay.
But, you know, council people get cars through their budget, to get them back and forth to the different meetings for those who don't own cars, and that's a great resource. But when we need the PM maintenance and stuff, we have to wait for them. And we don't have another avenue to get another car, because we have to wait on the PM. And you can imagine the council person being at Enterprise, waiting for an all-new job, along with everybody else, could take part of their way. So, I don't know why we didn't include, you know, cars in the master lease that council people could, and it can generally through the budget, the same thing they pay in Enterprise, to General Services. So, are we going to be looking at that kind of stuff, Mr. Klein? Because it's not that many.
We can look at it, sure.
Okay, I think it would be more efficient if we had them through General Services. So, that's all I have to say, keep up the good work, guys, y'all do a fantastic job. And I know I can't blame you for the buildings, because you need the money to do the buildings. So, Mr. Klein, I tell you every year, find the money, so we can get our buildings up to par.
And as Mr. Sharkey mentioned, we have added the capital reserve funding, 2.1 million this year. You noticed some of the increases in rent payments as a result, but we think that's very important for the long-term stability of our buildings.
Okay, because we have some beautiful buildings, we just need to take care of them, you know. And bring city agencies back into city buildings, and get them out of these private buildings. And we can save a lot of money that we can use for after-school programs for our kids, and those kind of things. So, the more we save in-house, the more money we have to fund different programs that we like. Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, thank you for everything you do, your folks are fantastic. I don't interact with DGS as much as some of the other agencies. But every time I have an issue or a problem or a question, you guys are right there, and I really appreciate it. Babla, too, thank you for everything. I had a quick question about this room. I hate the audio equipment in here, and it feels like it's from the 1980s. Is there anything... Oh, that's not you.
That's capable communication, are they coming?
Steve, I'm good otherwise.
Well, anyway.
No, 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 we have the worst mics in town.
I just wanted 21st century microphones. We took 20th century microphones. We took a trip down to Laurel, the Public Safety Committee did. I think the council president was there. We went down to Laurel and visited with their town supervisor and their police when we were having the body camera debate. And I mean, their council chambers, I mean, looked like, you know, something out of like the war room, or like a space center compared to this. So, anyway, thanks, Steve, appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Well, Steve. We need to have, and I think they're doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate it.
See, your efforts paid off.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Thank you for coming, thank you for the service you provide to the city in keeping things intact as best we can. And this concludes the hearing of your agency.
Thank you.
About that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I didn't know you were going there.
Well, what time were they due? Did you call them?
Oh, my God.
It's 6:15. Good, they should... Parking Authority, we're ready for the Parking Authority.
I saw Pete Little and Vince Thomas.
I need to come on, said, but people want to right there.
I'll call them right now.
If they're not coming, then don't ask them to come.
No, they're here.
Oh, okay.
They're 12:30.
Okay.
Put them at 12, put them at 12:30, and put them at 1.
Very nice.
Babla, how are you?
I'm fine with what's happening here. How's it going?
I'm good, how about yourself?
How you doing?
I'm wonderful, how about yourself?
Good, good.
Angel of darkness.
That's a good thing.
Good, hey, good.
It's very nice, it's very nice. Yeah, I do. Get your little picture up there or something, you know what I mean? Yeah.
I'm ready to go, I need to take a nap.
Understand, makes it more personal. You want to be personal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Little. We'll have you begin by introducing the staff you brought with you.
Will do.
Going to your presentation, and then we will take questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman, appreciate it. So, members of the executive team of the Parking Authority, and of course, Pete Little, Executive Director. We have Vincent Thomas, Chief Operating Officer. Sandra Downs, our Chief Financial Officer. David Rhodes, our General Counsel as well. So, thanks for having us here today.
Thank you.
And as soon as this comes up?
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, let me get this off the screen.
Thank you. Long time no see. So, just briefly, a service description, I think most of you know what the Parking Authority does. But, you know, we provide parking management services for the city of Baltimore, a quasi-governmental agency managing the city's on-street and off-street parking assets. So, we manage the city's off-street garages and lots. The parking meters here in the city are under us in administration of residential permit parking programs and the Residential Reserved Disabled Parking Program as well, too. We also develop parking plans for neighborhoods, and also oversee parking demand management strategies, like car sharing within the city. So, some of the things that we'll be working on in fiscal year '17 include continuing to replace some of the old single-space meters with smart single-space meters and multi-space meters that accept credit cards and debit cards, as well as cash. So, out of the about 12,000 metered parking spaces here within the city, we still have remaining about 2,500 of the old single-space meters. So, we'll be continuing to replace those old meters with ones that accept credit and debit cards. We're also going to be expanding Project Space, our program that provides accessible on-street parking to people with disabilities, while curbing the theft and abuse of disability placards. We'll be extending the Project Space to Harbor East, Fells Point, Federal Hill, and Mount Vernon this coming year. And some of the highlights, the successes of Phase 1, which was instituted within the Central Business District, were the reduction in theft and abuse of disability placards. So, before Project Space Phase 1, there were an average of over 23 disability placards that were being stolen within the city each month. After Phase 1 of Project Space, fewer than three stolen per month, so substantial reduction. Sorry.
They got them all.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know about that, the MVA is still giving out plenty of them, so, yep. And the other thing is the availability of metered parking. Before Project Space, within the CBD, there was fewer than 5% of the spaces were available, weekdays especially, after Project Space. It's about 20% of the spaces are available, which is really what we were looking for, that availability of parking spaces for people who wanted to come downtown for a shorter-term visit, either to go to a restaurant, or to shop, or to, you know, visit an office or an agency. This coming year, we plan to introduce pay-by-cellphone services as another payment option for metered parking here within the city. And there's legislation that will be allowing that in the near future, that'll be introduced to City Council. Yes, yep, where you can use a cellphone to pay for your metered parking. It's available in Washington, DC and others now.
I was going to ask when we were going to get the app, because in DC, Park Mobile, a couple of other ones that make it real easy to just pay for it. And then, if you're in a meeting or something and you're out of time, you can just pull out the app and extend your time.
Yep, up to the duration of the meter, anyway.
Right, right, well, I mean, yeah, if it's a four-hour meter and you only do two, and you're longer, you can go ahead and...
So, you've used it already, you know it.
I have.
Terrific, yep.
Sounds like it's bad for meetings.
Bad for meetings? To extend meetings, you mean, or... Oh, well, you know...
How do you get out of a meeting if you don't have to go...
Sometimes hearings last longer than you expected they might, right? So, yep.
Oh, my meter.
And then, we'll be continuing also to do renovations and capital improvements at the city-owned parking garages. We've done major renovations at several of the garages already over the past several years. We're going to be continuing to do that, to preserve those assets so that they're safe and easy to use, and to retain their value, of course. So, and at the bottom there, just a reminder that the revenue that's generated from parking garages, from parking permits, from parking meters, from parking citations, is collected within the city's parking funds, and the Parking Enterprise Fund in particular. And then, after deducting expenses, including debt service, expenses that the city has on parking revenue bonds, the rest is transferred annually into the General Fund of the city. And then, the next page are just some of the data that we look at. Here are performance measures, including the number of parking permits that are distributed annually, the number of disability placards that are stolen. As you can see, that number has been dipping each year, and we expect it to continue to go down as we introduce Project Space in more areas of the city. Parking meter revenue continues to climb, and we expect that to continue here. The revenue that's collected at the city's parking garages on a per-space basis continues to climb, and we expect it to continue to do so. And then, the percentage of city residents who say that finding parking in their neighborhood is a serious or a very serious problem, that's a number that we continually try to work at. And it did take, it has been going down, and through our efforts through parking demand management strategies and our other work, that's also a number that we are expecting to decline. So, with that, questions?
Councilman Costello.
Actually, can I wait a second? I'm prepared.
Okay.
Thirty seconds, sorry.
Well, my question was about when we were going to the app, and so you did address that. What's the timetable to have the conversion of more meters, you know, the standalone meters to the multi-meter framework?
Well, we're going to continue to have some single-space meters as well, but to convert all of the old single-space meters that don't accept credit cards and debit cards to either the multi-space meters that accept credit cards and debit cards, or to the single-space meters, what we call smart single-space meters that accept credit cards and debit cards. We expect the rest of them to be converted over the next couple of years.
Okay. Councilman Costello?
Pete, Vince, Gail, David, thank you very much. I don't have a question. Parking Authority is the model for customer service in Baltimore City, I just want to say that. You guys are fantastic, you are my favorite agency to interact with. Love Steve Robinson, Candace, the whole team. So, thank you very much for being so responsive and going above and beyond, really appreciate it.
Thanks, we have a good team, we're lucky to keep them together.
And I forgot my question, so I'll just follow up over email.
Well, there being no other questions. Well, Mr. Little, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a wonderful day. This recesses budget hearings until tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM.